For Sheffield. So I'm Zach McMurray, I'm a GP. I had an anniversary this year, been a GP for 30 years, 23 years as a partner in Woodhouse. I'm also the medical director for Sheffield Place within the Integrated Care Board and am the co-chair of the Health and Wellbeing Board. So the meeting today is open to the public and it's being webcast. We've received a petition from a member of the public, we'll take that a little bit later, so thank you for that. The agenda reports for today's meeting are available on the council's website and a small number of paper copies are available if anyone needs one, so if you want to just give us a shout, we can send them over. Please can request that everyone puts their phones to silent to try not to disturb the conduct of the meeting. And there's no fire test planned for today, so if there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the town hall staff and the assembly point is in the Tudor Square. Can I just go round and maybe just ask each of the board members to introduce themselves? Should we go this way? Dan?
I'm a board member, I'm Dan Spies, I'm a policy officer for the City Council providing support to the board.
Right.
Megan Norrie, partnership manager at Saw Community, representing voluntary sector.
Catherine Roberts Shaw from the Sheffield Health and Care Partnership.
Ben Kemp, superintendent of South Yorkshire Police.
Gigi Robinson, Chair Sheffield Health Watch.
Emma Latimer, executive place director NHS South Yorkshire and Trated Care Board.
Mike Hunter, I'm consultant psychiatrist and medical director and deputy chief exec at Sheffield Health and Social Care.
Thank you, Janet Coe, I'm operations director in adult care and wellbeing, I'm representing Alexis Chapel today.
Douglas Johnson, I'm a councillor for City Ward and Chair of the council's housing committee.
And councillor Angela Ardonzo, I am a councillor for Brumhill and Sharrow Vale, I'm the Chair of Adult Health and Social Care for Sheffield City Council, I'm also co-chair this committee, it's nice to be sitting here today.
I'm Joanne Cooper from Democratic Services.
Meredith, oh, sorry, thank you, Meredith Teasdale. We've also got David Black from Sheffield Teaching Hospitals, I know SDH were really keen to have representation, do we know if they've sent a deputy at all?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay, so maybe try and chase that with the hospital, because I know they were really keen to be represented at the board. Declarations of interest, sorry, any other apologists?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, declarations of interest, anything that anyone wants to raise? Okay, let's do it. And then public questions, we've got a question from Catherine Jowes-Homan. Catherine, would you like to present your question?
Good morning.
Morning.
This is Shirley. Good morning. Oh, grandfam at my side. We've come really today to present you with a bit of a petition. I own a salon in Stockbridge and I'm at the forefront of many customers' complaints of the current pharmacy provision in the area. I have made some notes, but we've also got some personal experience of the problems that have arisen as well as a result of what's been happening in our local community. Stockbridge and Deepcar, there's about 14,500 people and if you include the Upper Don as well, that doesn't include Peniston, there's about 18,500 people. We're serviced by three pharmacists, one in Deepcar and two in Stockbridge. A quarter of that population is over 65. If anybody's familiar with Stockbridge, the topography is rather intriguing at times, can be very steep hills, in bad weather can be quite treacherous and very much of the older population, we're really to support the vulnerable community, struggle to make that journey on a summer day, they mind on a winter day. And when you get to the doctor, you get your prescription, if you've fought that far because you don't use internet services to make your appointments in first place, you've managed to actually get an appointment, you've got your prescription, you get to a pharmacy to be greeted with it being closed, being no pharmacist present, or waiting seven days for then a prescription, which certainly isn't right in our eyes. Closest hospitals from Stockbridge, you've got 6.3 miles to Northern General, 7.5 miles to Hallamshire. Pharmacies closer to us are then Peniston, 4.3 miles, and Middlewood, again four miles away. 24 hour provision for pharmacy, the closest one to us, most, majority of Sheffield is the Wicker Pharmacy, but it's 9.7 miles from Stockbridge, it's not serviced by a bush route and in a taxi you're looking at a £40 round trip to get to that. There's no pharmacy provision in Stockbridge on a weekend, so nothing on a Saturday and a Sunday. What was the Lloyds Pharmacy has now become an allied pharmacist, so they are trying to provide some provision and I must admit, I will give them all credit, some things have improved since it's changed hands, but we've gone through a very strong period of the services not being adequate. They are opening now from 9 while 12 on a Saturday. But not always. But not always, it's not always there and it's not always available. So again, anybody that's older, more vulnerable, has no transport, has no family, doesn't have the availability to get them desperate prescriptions that they need. So we feel let down by the current provision in the area. Just having a little look, I've got, you know, circumstances reported to me from my clients where they're forced to wait one by one outside a pharmacist and that isn't age restrictive, so whether it's young mothers with babies in prams or whether it's somebody that's particularly unwell and vulnerable, they were only being let in one at a time at a particular pharmacist. Insulin wasn't available at times, so people have had to go further. Now, if you're young and you've got a car, you can get to Meadow Hall. I was aware particularly of a more issue when I was offering my clients to collect their prescriptions and take them to Meadow Hall, to take them to Boots, to fulfil them for them. Now, I shouldn't have to do that, but I was willing to do that because the provision wasn't there. There is a general dispensing practice at Deepcar, it's part of the doctors', but very often, fortunately, the pharmacist gets lost on his way to the pharmacist and doesn't often get there before 10am in the morning. So if you've had a nine o'clock appointment, you're then having to wait again to fulfil that prescription if it can be received and collected on the same day. I've got instances around nomads, I can answer your questions about that, I don't, I want to give you as much information as I can to back up what we're saying, it's not unfounded the reason why we've done the petition. The petition online has got 82 signatures on it now and there are comments on there from people's own experiences, plus we have got a petition in the salon as well that's got about 100 signed signatures for support of looking at the provision that we currently have. Lloyds Pharmacy, I can't blame Covid for this because through Covid they managed, it was doing really well. I don't know if, I'm trying to justify or try and work out what happened, but Lloyds Pharmacy has been sold to allied, whether that was the reason why some of the staff left, I don't know, but you've got a big pharmacy service in a big area, went from 11 staff down to three, so that pharmacist couldn't support all, you know, the nomads and everything else that we were required in that area. I was looking after an older client myself at the time, she received nomads and in Covid they used to bring four weeks worth at a time, a pack of four trays, two weeks before she required them. And towards the summer of last year, it became where, it became two packs every two weeks, then it became one pack every other week and then it became, she didn't get the nomad she needed starting the Monday till the Wednesday. So we moved a pharmacist to then them not having a pharmacist available to make sure that nomads were complete, so her carers then were having to go to where they're based at the other side of Sheffield in Beaton, to Morrison's there and get an emergency prescription to fulfil what was required.
Catherine, can I maybe just interrupt, I'm really keen to have an ongoing conversation. So what I may be going to suggest, we've got a really packed agenda, but I'm going to suggest that we actually sort of meet, or you meet with some colleagues after the meeting in the next couple of weeks or so, just to take some of the specific details forward.
Yeah.
What I'll do today is just read the response of the Health and Wellbeing Board to the question that you asked. And I'll just add a little bit of context personally, in that I think all of this has got to be taken in the background of a national shortage of pharmacists, of a contract that is probably, most pharmacists would say, not fit for purpose. And also in a, certainly from a GP perspective, pharmacy colleagues offering much more than just purely the dispensing of the prescription and competing pressures to do all of that. So I recognise it as a problem, I guess what I'm saying is there's some bits that I think we can help with, there are some bits that probably we won't be able to help with because it's a national contract and there are pressures across the system. So why don't I read the response and then what we can do is maybe arrange for you to have a meeting with some people afterwards and we can take things forward.
Just absolutely fine, just like to leave you with one more point.
Yep.
I'm also part of the Sheffield Towns Fund and there's a proposal to build a new building in Stockbridge that will remove one of the current pharmacists if they don't go into different premises within the area.
Yeah, okay. So I'll read the response, the response on behalf of the Health and Wellbeing Board, the Health and Wellbeing Board are required to publish a pharmaceutical needs assessment, a PNA, every three years with current assessment for Sheffield having been published in 2022 and running to 2025. The assessment was conducted based on a thorough assessment of demographics and population changes since a previous assessment in 2019 and with expected future population change due to new development over the life of the assessment also taken into account. The view of officers responsible for this work is that there has been no significant change in the local demographic context that would justify a full review of the PNA or production of a supplementary statement focused in Stockbridge and Deepcar. With regard to the commissioning provision of services in response to the PNA, notifications of changes that result in additions to provision or changes of ownership are made through Primary Care Support England, while following the Health and Care Act 2022 and subsequent transfer of responsibilities to integrated care boards, NHS South Yorkshire ICB are responsible for commissioning of community pharmaceutical services and for notifying changes that would have a detrimental impact on service delivery. The NHS South Yorkshire ICB primary care team have not been notified of any recent closures in the area, however, the team are aware that Stockbridge Well Pharmacy to discuss the previous issues and concerns. They have been advised by walls that the workforce has improved due to the recruitment of permanent staff members and also through support provided by the regional management team. There also appears to have been an improvement in delivery of services, again, the team have not received any recent complaints from patients or local GP practices and have not been notified of any unplanned closures for this pharmacy in the last few months. The primary care team do have ongoing regular meetings with Well, the area management team to discuss any issues and so if there are any specific issues relating to the pharmacy, these can be followed up through that route. With regard to Deepcar, the opening hours of Deepcar Pharmacy have not changed since the current PNA was completed, NHS South Yorkshire have not received any recent complaints from patients or local GP practices or any recent notifications of unplanned closures for this pharmacy. Responsible officers would be happy to meet with the petitioners to discuss their concerns and to understand whether there are specific services that are not currently being provided or opening hours required by local patients that are not currently being delivered and to take this into consideration. If this would be welcome, the Health and Wellbeing Board's support team can make the necessary connections. It's okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you, very, thank you very much for your question. As I say, really keen to take it forward. Douglas?
Do you mind if I come in? I just want to say that as councillors, I just want to say that what you've described is also, we picked up other parts of the city, appreciate as always, Stockbridge is always a more difficult case because it's not really connected to anywhere in the rest of the world, is it? So we've got, but I just wondered, so my question is, when are we actually next due to do the pharmacy needs assessment? Because it strikes me to be really good if we can actually get some of that detail pinned down. I think we need to know which is the stuff that's national issues largely outside our control, what's to do with sort of private business and their own management, what is stuff that actually we've got a bit more leverage over, including that private management? When are we due to do that? And we've got a second question about Greg answers.
I'll answer question one first. So published fresh pharmacy needs assessment 2022, it is responsibility of the Health and Wellbeing Board to publish, it's a quirky act of history that is a Health and Wellbeing Board responsibility, it's an NHS England commissioned service, or it's a recent, it was NHS England commissioned. I'll be brutal here, my team do not have the capacity to refresh the pharmacy needs assessment. In theory, it's due for 2025 or if any substantial shift between then and now, obviously, we'd do a refresh, but again, I'll repeat, my team do not have the capacity to do it. That is a problem I cannot readily resolve.
Lee, right.
So Zach, I'm really sorry, because I know you need to move on, but I think this is really important and this is the business of this committee, because on the one hand we've heard shocking stories really, on the other hand, we've got responses sort of going, well, evidence seems to suggest everything's okay and it's that gap that matters because that's where the public fall. So if you're saying there's no pharmacy provision in Stockbridge at the weekend, I'm thinking as a GP, so where do the ill people go who may normally consult at a pharmacy? Well, that's going to hit the more expensive medical world or A and E, so as a system, it's not working and we need to really sort of pick up on that. So I really welcome the fact that this is going to be taken forward outside this room. I also just want to recognise, I think you said you run a hairdressing salon?
I do, yes.
And here you are, up to your eyes in health and wellbeing and I think we've just got to recognise that as well, that actually all the wellbeing and health stuff that goes on in the community that is underneath our radar sometimes as a wider system and yet is the linchpin of what's going on in the community and how we weave that in, both in terms of information about what's going on, but also recognising the amazing work that you're doing as well.
Douglas?
I wanted to come back, but I've got a separate point, so if Greg's and Dan's point on that, without drawing out the debate.
Very quickly, agreeably, completely, the published evidence never really properly captures the experience, it kind of well documented, the community pharmacy provision isn't in a great place, there's no secret there. Definitely we should meet, discuss, definitely we need the right people from both community pharmacy world and the ICB in that meeting with you. Just to pick up on Lee's point, I'm really clear, most health and wellbeing is done by people who do not have the word health and wellbeing in their job title and that's always been the case and thank you for doing that, that's all I'll say.
I suppose the only thing that I thought was worth saying is there's two aspects to this, one is, is the assessment right, the other one, are the services being commissioned appropriately in response to that assessment? And I think that's why it's probably helpful to have that meeting to follow up, to understand exactly in which of those two bits the problem lies, or whether, even if the service is being commissioned correctly, but then for whatever reason it's not being provided in response to that. So I think we need to get under the skin of that properly.
So the second thing is just a practical thought, you flagged up that one of the pharmacies that's in the line of shops there is potentially under threat by developments of the Towns Fund and I wondered if actually we could get support of this board to flag that up with the Towns Board, basically because Stockbridge has got a shedload of money, I think £24 million to regenerate the town centre. And actually what we can say as a board, I think, is that community pharmacy has an enormous impact, it's not just a shop there, it has enormous impact on all the things that we value. I wonder if we've got a mechanism for formally writing from this board to whoever, I mean, as the city council is the accountable body ultimately for the Sheffield Towns Trust, Stockbridge Towns Trust Fund, Dan can probably tell me what I should be asking for.
I suppose whether we need to communicate with the Towns Fund, the other point is making sure that the ICB team are aware that that is a risk that they need to respond to, because if pharmacy does close as a consequence of the Towns Fund, they will need to address that, that would be very squarely in their remit.
I might be able to give you some light on that because I'm part of the Towns Fund Board as well. So the Towns Fund Board is aware of the issue, obviously I've addressed it with them regards that. The new building that they're hoping to create, there will be facility in there for, you know, for the shops if they want to rent again within the community and there are shops, you know, available if they want to rent, it's just the building that they're currently in isn't, isn't there, well, won't be included.
Sorry, a slightly different point, my point was that it's in the power of the Towns Fund to take steps to encourage this to happen and I wondered whether we as a board want to put a bit of weight behind that to say, it would be a good thing if they could basically make sure this happens if it is actually possible, rather than just leave it to, you know, the open market.
Let's follow up on that and see if there's a way we can do that. I really want to thank you for coming, I know we're really tight for time, I know the response is very formal, but that's the way we have to work within this chamber, but I'm really keen that we have a further conversation and I'd personally be quite happy to come and have that conversation with you and the officers that would be involved. I think like Dan says, it's the assessment of the need, I think it's a sad reality that sometimes the supply that's available, particularly within staff groups within the NHS, just can't meet the need. So there is a little bit of trying to share out a very scarce resource so that you actually get provision across a whole area, but it does sound as if there are very valid issues that you're raising there, so why don't we try and arrange that meeting, I mean realistically, probably going to be into the new year, but let's try and do that as soon as we can.
Absolutely, I'm really happy with that, thank you.
Appreciate you coming, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sorry, Health Watch update, Judy?
Thank you. I'm going to just switch the order I was going to speak on and this is our bi-monthly update on things we're hearing, so it's the canary in the coalmine, if you like, I'm going to talk about prescriptions that links to the comments we've just been hearing. And I'll just tell you a story that Health Watch picked up through its information line. A woman telephoned her GP practice to order a reprieve prescription, which she did monthly, but this time she was told she couldn't place phone orders anymore and instead needed to fill in, guess what, an online form. She hadn't had any communication about this, she didn't have the internet and so they said, well, you can come in, but she said, I'm a full-time carer, I can't. Obviously quite worried about how she was going to get essential medication. The surgery said it was only housebound patients who could access a different sort of service and we've been hearing this quite a bit, particularly about using online forms, which for many people, not just because they're elderly, but because they don't have smartphones, they haven't got the money for them. So and in the end, Health Watch intervened, got in touch with the practices who said, yes, they would sort it out, but clearly we can't do that with everybody who phones up and says, I've got a problem. And I know Zach and I have talked a bit about this, I think there are two things going on, if I'm right, that NHS England are pushing digital, understandable, but they're also pushing equals, health equalities. And it seems as if we can't hold the two ideas in our heads and nuance it, that for some people, digital doesn't work, it's a sort of train ticket office thing, is it what, another version of that? So I wanted to alert people about this and I suppose particularly to GPs and others, because I think there's a system issue there, there ought to be exceptions to the rule that we can do so that for really vulnerable patients, they don't have to go through this rigmarole of, if they know about Health Watch, to phone Health Watch. So there's a story that sort of connects to what we've just heard, but I want to pick up the things I was going to kick off with, in terms of a collaboration that Health Watch are doing, a couple of Speak Up reports and a little nice story at the end, it's Christmas. The collaboration, I want to talk about long Covid and it's particularly relevant at this moment if you've been watching your TV, the news just recently, with VAS, Volta Chats and Sheffield and the hospital, we're doing a project on long Covid and it's particularly focused on people who've not been able to access the services around long Covid and often that's to do with health inequalities. They don't have the language to speak to the GP, the GP doesn't do enough to interrogate the issue and GPs, as I understand it, are the first port of course, if you don't get through that doorway, you don't get all the other services. So quite a number of people who probably have got long Covid are not being diagnosed and therefore not being treated and it's to do with the system under pressure and we really understand that. So there's been interviews done with individuals, there've been some focus groups, particularly with people in deprived communities and there's been a really interesting film that's just come out, I think today, which I think will be shown in Dr Surgery, so I hope GPs and others, or anybody, a couple of minutes, it will tell you about, and people who are sitting waiting, about long Covid and how you can access services. There are also training courses for community workers, so an alert really to look out for those, because I think it's a really important issue, it's an ongoing one and it's particularly about health inequality. And on a similar theme, one of the things that Health Watch I think is really proud of is the Speak Up reports. We give very small grants to community groups, usually who don't have staff, to do some work on their particular community and this one, great name, Cabs, it's working with taxi drivers, it's champion in achieving better health in Sheffield and those are mostly South Asian men and their health isn't good for reasons as are obvious. But some interesting, I think, ideas that actually wouldn't cost money, but require attention about information on nutrition, particularly in community languages and particularly that are appropriate to different sorts of food cultures. And then the other one is around social prescribing, to make sure that those groups can access services, because often they're working when services are open, it's a bit like we've heard just now, and I won't tell you all the recommendations, there are lots of, the devil's in the detail about health inequality and this is one of the detail that I think we need to pick up on. And similarly, I think a good piece of collaboration, Space to Breathe, a GP access report, unless any GP's thinking, we're really getting GPs, we get a huge amount of positive comments, this is about some details and it's about access to mental health services by a group of rethink experts by experience. And they've been talking about the difficulty of people with serious mental health conditions getting an appointment, but also about some of the behaviours that can happen in surgeries that affect staff, particularly reception staff, and they've got a really interesting idea about working together, not to say they, they, but to let's see if we can work together on this. I think it's a really positive report, it's in the Chapel Green Surgery, but what they want to do is spread this across the city. That seemed to me to be, and please may be interested in this as well, a really positive way, finding out people's experiences, finding positive ways that perhaps aren't that expensive to bring people together. So again, I commend this report, I won't go into the detail. Health Watch's work is really focused on those people who often don't have a voice and we try to help them to speak up for themselves and the nice bit at the end is we've just had 10 years of doing this, we had our 10-year anniversary birthday and Emma spoke at that. One of the things I didn't know, but during that 10 years, we've had 27,000 conversations, which did seem extraordinary to me, all part of that finding out what's happening to people and putting alongside the huge statistical data analysis at some point, that qualitative, what's it actually like for you? And helping the system to understand that and to change and improve. And if you want to help us celebrate a 10-year lip salve for you on the table there, do have one, you can keep remembering about Health Watch, thank you.
Brilliant, thanks, thanks Judy. So congratulations on your anniversary. A big thank you to Health Watch, I mean, your input's hugely appreciated, your constructive criticism is welcomed. I agree with you around the smartphones, I've got a smartphone, I'm not smart enough to use most of the functions on it, but I know it's a big issue for people and it is that disconnect between a lot of the national policy that just doesn't fit when it comes down to the coalface and that's why we really encourage the national policymakers to listen to the guys in the coalface and the communities and we encourage GPs to do a bit of flexibility, but they're kind of stuck in a system that's very target orientated, so there's massive pressure to do that. So we will continue to feed that back, so thanks for that. Emma?
Yeah, so can I just say a massive thank you, obviously I did come to the event.
Yeah. So can I just say a massive thank you? Obviously I did come to the event and we do recognise you as an equal partner around the table in our healthcare partnership. So I want to say a massive thank you to everything you do. I've obviously read both of the reports you referred to and there are some particular nuances that we really need to tackle. So just from my perspective, it's about, you know, you said we did. So it's about how do we, how do we report back and not just lose sight of these really valuable reports because it is part of our health inclusion strategy. So I think I'd be interested in terms of how the Health and Wellbeing Board sort of respond to this. So in a couple of months' time, maybe three to six months' time, how we've actually responded to these things. Because they are really specific to individual groups of our population.
Mike?
Thanks. Thanks, Judy. I wanted to really welcome what you said about people with severe mental health problems and access to primary care. People with serious mental health problems very frequently are experiencing things that aren't visible or apparent to others, but that can be really frightening and distressing and that can be manifest as how they could come across. It's just really welcome to hear you putting it in terms of working together for inclusivity rather than excluding people. I think that really works to, you know, to our shared agenda around reducing discrimination, increasing inclusion and getting rid of stigma at last. Thank you.
Greg?
Happy birthday. I was disappointed it was only lip salve, but there you go. Just a specific comment on the speak-up reports. You did one relatively recently around sexual health. It was amazing. Really, 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 really helpful and gave some really crunchy insight into commissioners and providers of that. So picking up on the, I think it was Emma started, the sort of the feedback loop, the sort of, the board as a whole does take the sort of the feedback and the insight and build it into current and future strategy. And then the specific reports on specific boundary issues. Just probably we need to keep double checking that we've got the right feedback loop for the specific things and the general things. And I think we have, but I can't guarantee we have because I don't think we've got the right machine to make sure that actually happens. And maybe Judy and I need to just have a brief chat on that to make sure the machine's right behind the scenes.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks for the lip salve as well, Judy. Being a tight Scot, that's a nice present for my daughter, so.
Can I just pick up a point?
Yeah.
I mean, I think that question about feedback loop is a really well-made one. And I know at the partnership meeting on Monday, I'm going to make it as well. I think a couple of things. One of the things I often find is I come to meetings like this and people will do really excellent reports. And I think actually Health Watch did a report on that issue and sexual health was one of them, but they haven't looked at it. And then we say, have you seen this? They say, oh, no. So there's something about this, a system that's not doing that, that we really need to tackle. I've got some ideas about that. I won't talk about this now. I think the other one is we will do six or seven recommendations on a particular report. They go to six or seven bits of the system, but we're simply not big enough to knit that together. So I think there is a question for this board and for the Health and Social Care Partnership. If this is a collective place where we together work on these issues, how do you do that knitting? Because Health Watch really doesn't have, we know what needs to be done. We just haven't got the capacity to knit and to chase.
I think we need to do that knitting for you, like you say. Angela, did you want to come in?
Yeah, just a comment and going back to the digital thing, I think we do that in all organisations, including the council. And I think we should just conflate the fact that we need to make digital more accessible to people, you know, regardless of their background, et cetera, but also having lots of different ways that people can input into the system without having to have access to digital. It's got to be a choice to use digital and doesn't suit everybody. And I think we've just got to keep bringing it up because people who do case work and deal with people like Catherine, you know, she does case work in our community, we councillors, we come across lots of cases where people cannot get through the system because they can't upload a document online. And that happens a lot, you know, I can see I have at least like one a month, sometimes more than that.
Last comment, Greg?
Two very quick ones. And I may, I put Janet on the spot here on the medicines access. Part of the machine in adult services is linking with medicines management professionals to sort that where the digital access just won't work for certain groups. And Janet may or may not wish to comment on that, but last I heard, it works pretty well, actually. Then as a sort of a knitter-in-chief, you and I need to be, Judy, again, be clear. We don't have a set of people to do the knitting. So we're reliant on the goodwill of the people in the room. I will undertake to be the knitter-in-chief, but don't think I've got a team to do a whole bunch of knitting for me. So there is something about us collectively being your PR machine to sort of systematically build the reports that Health Watch do on insights on specific stuff and just get those out through all of our network, probably a bit more systematically than we do at the moment. So I'll, but we'll pick that up after.
Thank you. Thanks, Judy. Very aware of the time. I'm not doing a very good job of chairing this meeting. I think it's Jackie that's doing the Better Care Fund update. So if you could apply significant quip to your presentation, that'd be really helpful.
Yeah. So hi, for those people that don't know me, I'm Jackie Mills. I'm Chief Finance Officer in Sheffield as part of NHS South Yorkshire. Unfortunately, Martin Smith, who would normally present this report, is poorly today. And because I was attending, I said I would just cover it for him. It is a very quick report. It's just an update at quarter two on the progress against the national metrics for the Better Care Fund. You will see from the report that the majority of the metrics are on track. The one metric that is off track is the one around discharge. We have obviously got a very extensive programme around addressing discharge. We've seen some good progress made, although in latter weeks we are seeing a system that remains under pressure. But we have an extensive work programme to address that. And the rest of the report just gives you an outline on progress on various themes. So I just wanted to present it full information and happy to take any questions.
Okay. Thanks, Jackie. Any questions? Any comments? Greg?
Mine, the usual one. It's amazing stuff and it belies a whole bunch of work done by a whole bunch of people. This being close to target for all of this stuff doesn't happen by magic. It happens because a lot of people were really hard to make it. So on the discharge thing, I'll channel my inner Janet. Discharge is a tiny chunk of adult social care business, but it's the thing that attracts most national attention. It's not that it doesn't matter, but we probably neglect that. So that actually adult social care is a whole bunch of other stuff as well. And it's not that far off, to be honest. I mean, I get, I get that it's off target. But in the grand scheme of things, in a difficult winter, when the whole system's under a huge amount of pressure, I didn't lose loads of sleep about it.
I was just going to say a similar thing. I think it's a huge achievement. I'm going to use my usual phrase, that the way of avoiding a discharge is don't admit the patient in the first place. And that's around some of the stuff we're talking about later, isn't it? So thanks, Jackie. Don't think any other comments? Okay. That's great. Brilliant. Thank you. So Health and Wellbeing Board is asked to note the 23 to 25 Better Care Fund quarter two performance. Next, we've got the Joint Strategic Needs Assessment. Chris?
Morning, everybody. I'm Chris Givens, Public Health Principal, for those of you who don't know me. My team is responsible for producing the Joint Strategic Needs Assessment, which we have now largely done. The JSNA exists in four parts. One is the kind of high-level executive summary, which I attached with the paper that was circulated before the board. I'm not going to talk that, talk through that now. It's based on themes and presentations that we've discussed many times at this board and in other places. I'll happily take some questions on it though. The other aspects of the JSNA are our local insights platform, which largely replaces the JSNA website as it currently exists. We're expanding the use of local insights across the city and encouraging agencies to make use of it as a kind of self-service platform for data and information. It has a mapping interface. It has a dashboard interface and it has an automated report generation function as well. So if you are, for example, in East Lac and you want a summary of all the health data and outcomes that we have for East Lac, you could download that from our local insights platform at the touch of a button and you get 74 pages of graphs and charts and commentary, which hopefully saves us a little bit of work in terms of explaining what the numbers mean, but we're always on hand to help. The other part of our JSNA is the picture of health toolkit, some of which I'm going to talk about in our upcoming presentation on spending outcomes. This is a data visualisation platform. It draws heavily from the OHID fingertips data and other ONS data, including the census, and provides a kind of slide deck summary at city level, which people can interrogate and access data for. Again, that replaces most of the infographics and kind of data science stuff that we had on our original JSNA website. We don't need to reinvent the wheel on that one. It's been, it's been done and we should make use of those resources. One thing I'm conscious of is that there are differing degrees of comfort and confidence with some of these toolkits. And I think it would be useful to think about having a health and wellbeing session at some point next year when we look at providing a bit of training and kind of how-to on some of these toolkits that we've got access to. So people can go away and make the best use of them possible. The last thing is the pharmaceutical needs assessment. Those of you who had your eat-its this morning will note my typo that the board was asked to ratify the JSNA and the PNA for 2022. The next PNA, as we've already discussed, is during 2025. I think there's considerable discussion to be had about how we make that happen and whether or not it makes more sense for the PNA to happen at an ICB footprint rather than simply at Sheffield. I know that would certainly help us because it would allow us to pull some resource in terms of producing that content, drawing on analysts across the different areas. And I think it makes sense that any future iteration of the PNA is done at that geography.
Okay. Thanks, Chris. I'm quite sad and I do like all the graphs and the data and stuff, but I would say it is worth a look. I mean, it's, you always need to have the intelligent look at the data and sometimes you need the intelligent guys like Chris that really understand it to explain it to you. But there's some amazing stuff on there. So I would encourage people just to have a little look at it. Any comments? Any questions at all? Angela?
A very quick kind of questions, comment. The data can tell a story very well and I think it's how we tell the story that is important. And it's really good to see, you know, the mention of determinants of health and things. But what, like legally, what can we do locally to counteract what we can and can't do to stop those determinants? You know, having an effect, affected particularly in our most vulnerable people, namely children. It's quite scary to see how many children are obese by year six. And, you know, what levers can we pull locally to, you know, to counteract what is in effect, you know, sometimes out of our control, really?
So the final part of our four-part JSNA is our A to Z, which will be an online platform. That will link those key themes that we've outlined with the strategy documents that we've produced internally. So we have tobacco strategy, food strategy, et cetera, and various strategies around commercial and wider determinants of health, which contain information on what we can do about some of those issues that you mentioned. I'm sure Greg will want to come in at this point as well.
Lee?
Yeah, thanks, Chris. I love your local insights, not your local insights, but the, you know, the data in there is really valuable. Often when we think about Sheffield, we talk about the average, don't we? And we know that Sheffield is not an average city. It's a city of extremes and actually the average that we look at in a lot of the data doesn't tell the story of what's really going on. And what's really going on in the areas of greater deprivation is what's driving a lot of the costs in health and social care. And so the local insight data is really helpful in that. It is an ongoing sense of frustration that we've got the information and in that information is a lot of the solutions to the problems. But I'm struck by the comment that you've got that says, population health management is still very much a concept rather than actual practice. And I know that we'll probably come on to this later on in this meeting, but until we actually turn it into practice using the data that we've got, we're not going to make any big difference and we'll carry on making the mistakes that we're currently making in terms of the decisions that we're making, the way that we spend the money.
I share your frustration, Lee. And it's a good segue into the next part of the conversation. Greg?
Thanks. On, I'll be kind of in reverse order. Population health management is about data. Personal view, it's pointless. We can have that conversation afterwards in the way it's currently articulated by lots of people. To then go in in reverse order on, to answer Angela, your point. There are plenty of choices we can make. I had a brief conversation before she sadly left us to go and work in Derbyshire. Jess Wilson, who is responsible for the food strategy, in response to both the Dimbleby Plan, which the government chose not to implement, actually the Obesity Health Alliance Strategy, which was published a month or so back, I said to Jess. So how well do we do? And her immediate response was, actually, we're broadly doing the things that were recommended. The issue is scale, resourcing, all of those kinds of things. But there are choices that the city can make around advertising, planning, hot food takeaways. And we know we've been in that space in the past, food access, food poverty. There are policy choices that we can make to push that harder. The sad reality is on childhood obesity, we're kind of holding it, but we should be reversing it. And it's one of the things where we don't do terribly well. Sheffield is about average on that. We're not doing any worse or any better than anywhere else. But broadly, we're not doing terribly well on food, food and obesity. Just comments on the JSNA itself. Chris, you mentioned team. It's you and Ian. So let's be clear, this is work of two people and it's an amazing effort and that has to be put on record. Team is a euphemism for two people here. It's a high-level statement of how healthy we are for the city. Lots of people use it in lots and lots of different ways. It will never be able to sort of answer the specific, very operational question. Everyone wants to know, well, what should we do on Ward Four in five years' time or in Darnall in seven years' time? It's not designed for that. It's designed to give a high-level statement. The one thing I would encourage all board members to read and reflect on deeply is the conclusions on page 73 of the PAC. This city, like every other city, has not responded to the epidemiological challenge of flatlining life expectancy and healthy life expectancy. And the gap is now beginning to widen. We've held it for some times, now beginning to widen, and non-communical disease prevention, that's where most of the demand in health and social care comes from. Or from an NHS and social care delivery perspective, the transition from unimorbidity to multimorbidity. No city in the country has responded well to that, but the JSNA points that out very, very clearly. The challenge for the city and the board and others is to respond to the need, which the JSNA sets out very articulately. I'll stop. I'll get off my soapbox now, Chair.
Thanks, Greg. I also appreciate your comment about population health because I thought it was just really stupid because I really don't understand that either. And everyone that's got population health after the name seems to give me a different definition of what it is. So I'd be really keen to have that conversation because I think it is quite important because I think it's taken us in loads of different directions. Mike, did you want to come in?
You've probably just said my point. Zach, I just wanted to take the opportunity as a practicing secondary care clinician to agree with what everyone's said about population health as if it was some laser-guided intervention operating at the level of populations. And the risk is all that would do is perpetuate the technological paradigm in medicine and not at all get to grips with the fundamental issue of social justice that people are talking about.
Okay, Mike. Thank you. Any other comments? Any other questions at all? Greg?
Very briefly, Chris suggested that, I think you suggested that we endorse that we, next time we have to do a pharmacy needs assessment, we've heard already some of the issues that we should do that at South Yorkshire level, not at Sheffield level. And that, being brutally honest, is a team capacity, team capacity thing for us. I think there's much to be said on that one. So I'd ask the board to endorse that as a very, very, very minimum.
I mean, that sounds something we would want to try and do at that scale. That would make sense. So thank you. Did you want to come back?
Just a very quick follow-on on that. I think it's often, it's often been the case that the pharmaceutical health needs assessment has had aspirations of doing a proper kind of consultation on community need and getting the voice of the community incorporated into the PNA. That was something of a sacrificial lamb during COVID because of the time scales NHS England put us to actually produce the report, which were very inflexible. It would be good if we, if we can agree that it'd be done at the appropriate geographical scale that we
But we also give consideration to doing that consultation and making sure that that's incorporated into into the document, because I think it would address some of the issues that were mentioned in the previous conversations.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think we should replace the term population health management with lived experience. Because, you know, if you ask, as you say, if you ask people how it feels, it doesn't, the data doesn't represent how people are feeling. So actually, going back to the way you said you did it, just sort of builds on your point, actually, you know, what, how are people feeling? This data is overwhelming, isn't it? And actually, we need to get into the nub of, and a lot of it is society, a lot of it is poverty, as you as you say. So I do think we get, we tie ourselves up, keep re-describing the problem rather than thinking about the solutions, and we need to focus on those.
We're really good at describing the problem. Greg, Lee, Lee first.
I suppose it's just to cut, and I don't want to get picky or anything, but actually, population, population health management is is looking, is looking at the data, isn't it? And I suppose the frustration is, Chris, you've been showing us these graphs and these pictures, you know, month in, month out, year in, year out. And it's, it's what we do with it that matters, isn't it? You know, so if we were a business, we would handle that data really differently, you know, and we'd go, oh, hang on, there's a big need, there's a persistent need. Oh, there's acute, and that's, that's driving a lot of our costs. I think we need to do something about that. And we don't, we sort of go, yeah, that looks familiar. So that's sort of my defence of the importance of the data. It is really important, notwithstanding it doesn't capture what that feels like. But it's that we don't actually use it very well.
Chris, do you want to come back?
I think, I think, Lee, that's because you value population health intelligence. And actually, population health management is not that. I think population health management in the way it's described is a means of digitally screening the population, getting people onto disease registers and doing more medicine. I think that's the purpose of population health management, is about better stratifying the population so they can be, quote unquote, treated and referred better. It's not really about interrogation of that data beyond that medical purpose. And I think that population health intelligence, which is what we try to do, is about providing information that leads to better commissioning and decision-making and better spending public money, hopefully.
Thanks, Chris. Greg?
It's like a troublesome twosome in the corner. The risk of more existential angst, Chris, this is Chris's line. Population health management is really good at describing the conditions people have versus the conditions people live in. And it's the latter that kind of really matters. Just on the sort of the eternal existential angst that we describe the problem, but we don't do anything. We, let's be clear, the city is doing amazing things day in, day out, in all sorts of different areas, sectors, service and policy areas. That is doing the right thing. Our question is scale and we talk about the left shift to move upstream prevention. The the reality is we're not investing in that. We're, and as a result, we're holding the gap in life expectancy or any other measure you choose to mention. That's no mean feat and that's one, something to actually celebrate. But but if we want to close it, we need to shift resources, put bluntly, and that leads us on to probably the next conversation we may have.
Emma?
Just to qualify that, Greg, sorry, I didn't mean we weren't doing anything. I think we're just perhaps not doing enough in the right way because we're measuring the wrong things. So just to clarify that, sorry.
And I think just to agree with Chris, I think the the medical model, hamster wheel feels as if it's gone incredibly fast at the moment. It's going to disintegrate fairly soon. So, you know, apart from the fact that it's the right thing to do, to do it this way, I don't think the current system is sustainable. So we do need to do some drastic and make some difficult decisions. So that's a really good segue into the next part of the the conversation. Anyone else want to make any comments? Should we move on? So I think we're just asked to, Health and Wellbeing Board has asked to note the update. Should we move on to the next section? So assessing spending decisions against our strategy. This is a double act, I think, between Jackie and Chris, is that right?
Yeah. So thanks for inviting us here today. So I think it is really a neat segue into what Chris and I have been asked to look at. So we've set out on the slide what we're intending to cover. So we'll, we'll explain where the ICB currently spends its health money in Sheffield. We've got some information on current high-level outcomes, so linking back to the conversation about JSNA. Some more information about local authority spend outcomes and return, potential return on investments. And then we thought we'd just give you a bit more of a flavour of some specific pieces of work that we're looking at at the moment and what potential that potentially brings. And really just thinking about how that informs the health and wellbeing strategy, how that informs the priorities that the Health and Care Partnership are reviewing, how that informs the ask of different organisations and how we come together to address some of these things. So we'll go to the next slide. So if I start off with this, so this is a breakdown of where the Sheffield Health Place Budget is spent. So you'll see that on average, we spend one thousand eight hundred and fifty pounds per person in Sheffield. That is slightly higher than the average for the other places within the South Yorkshire ICB. You'll see that the largest area of spend is on acute services. So by far and away, the biggest element of spend. I should also note that that spend does not include additional spend on the Sheffield population for specialised services that are commissioned by, currently commissioned by NHS England. So that doesn't reflect the full level of acute spend on the Sheffield population. The next highest area of spend is on primary care, including primary care drug spend. It's interesting to note the one area in Sheffield that we spend significantly more than our counterparts across South Yorkshire is on mental health. So we do have a quite a higher proportion of spend on mental health in Sheffield compared to the other areas. Want to go to the next slide? Chris?
So this slide is an example of the forty-two-page picture of health toolkit I was referring to in the previous conversation about the JSNA. This is now a cornerstone part of our JSNA. It draws heavily on the fingertips toolkit provided by OHI. And it is the most comprehensive health and wellbeing outcomes framework available to us as a city. It will provide us with the key set of outcome measures in the twenty-twenty-four health and wellbeing strategy. So I would encourage you all to familiarise yourself with it. As Lee, can I have the next slide, please? As, as Lee was just talking about, Sheffield suffers from the tyranny of averages. For many outcomes, we appear close to the national average because we have extremes of high or low values across the city. It's the classic John Shute cartoon, the poor are getting poorer, but with the rich getting richer, averages out in the long run. The gaps we see in many of the key outcomes, including but not limited to life expectancy and healthy life expectancy, are in preventable conditions and their age of onset. And in the most recent data, we can see that COVID nineteen features as a significant contributor fifteen percent of the gap in life expectancy between the least and most deprived areas in twenty twenty twenty-one, highlighting the unequal impact of the pandemic. I've never seen a single disease explain that bigger gap in in life expectancy. This is the next slide, yeah. It's the the chart on the the right-hand side there that shows the difference in the the contributing factor to the gap we see in healthy life expectancy between the the least and most deprived areas by sex. Next slide, please. Because of the breadth and sometimes complex nature of outcomes framework at fingertips, there's been some attempts to develop broader-scale city approaches with summary outcome measures. The problems of averages still apply. And furthermore, the summary index schools assume that decision-makers in the public have no particular preferences for particular outcomes over any others. And in reality, our resource allocation is underpinned by several often competing preferences. And whilst a lot of attention is given to these indexes, I think they're of pretty limited value, to be honest. Next slide, please. So there's a sort of knotty problem of outcomes and how we measure them and what we mean by them. The NHS has a methodology, which is kind of utilitarian economics, and an entire agency, NICE, which I I used to work for, for assessing the value of devices and medicines, which aims to maximise gains in health per pound spent. Outcomes are standardised across domains, they use quality adjusted life years. And there isn't really a local authority equivalent of assessing that kind of value for money. We don't, we don't, we don't have that. We do have pretty well-defined and comprehensive health outcomes data. The geographic scale often masks the underlying inequalities in that data. And those place outcome indices like TPI, they equally weigh all outcomes and they don't consider preferences, I mentioned. The other thing is that we often confuse outcomes for more easily measured data. So we have, we capture a lot of activity for financial and accounting purposes. And we often use that as a pool proxy for demand outcomes and and quality. Next slide, please. So something that's been done for a long time to try and develop a kind of integrated view of spend and outcomes. And they used to do this for CCGs as well, but I believe it's it's since been discontinued, is the SPOT tool, which is basically a toolkit which allows you to do exploratory analysis of local authority spend and associated outcomes across broad domains. Data lags are a big issue, so the data, the most up-to-date data on SPOT is twenty nineteen, unfortunately. But it is, it is continued to be developed. And it allows us to look at where we sit in comparison to our statistical neighbours. So that allows us to adjust for deprivation, for example, about twenty-three percent of the Sheffield population are in the lowest indices of deprivation. It's comprehensive, it draws on about four hundred different indicators across all those different departments and government agencies. Next slide, please, sorry. And next slide. Nope, let's jump too far ahead. One more. Forwards, please. There we go. So this is the graph of spend compared to our statistical neighbours in each of those different domains. Central, which is actually employment, cultural education, environment and regulation, highways, housing, planning, public health, social care adults and social care children. And you can see that our spend is broadly comparable across domains, actually with regards to our neighbours. Bit less for education, but it's within kind of standard deviations. Next slide, please. With the exception of highways, which is where we've got this this big spike in positive outcomes compared to the national average and our neighbours, it's largely a function of population satisfaction, apparently, with with public transport, access to public transport and road condition surveys. Most of the other outcome measures on here are broadly aligned with national averages and our statistical neighbours. That doesn't mean that they're all good. We know in general that many outcomes are trending downward nationally. There are some better news stories in there, particularly our progress on smoking cessation and infant mortality, for example. But there are also rising pressures on adult social care, delayed discharge, children's social care. Mental health and sexual health outcomes are worsening and waiting times are rising. Next slide, please. The point of the the tables here is to emphasise that underneath each of those broad domains, there are an enormous range of interventions undertaken within the local authority spend envelope. And evidence shows that many of those critical interventions provide positive return on investments. And equally, where cuts have been made, significant costs have been incurred. Local authorities are in a similar position to the NHS, whereby cuts to programmes that are fundamentally preventative have been made in order to cope with rising acute demand pressures. But this in turn merely delays an inevitable increase in demand and creates a positive feedback mechanism with knock-on effects across all sectors. The opportunity cost of this is the health and wellbeing of the population. Many of these interventions have got positive return on investment, which is distributed across multiple sectors. And indeed, where cuts have been made, the effects are multi-agency also. For example, children's services, where costs are felt to the NHS, police, justice, local government and welfare, costing us tens of millions of pounds across each of those agencies per year. Can you skip two slides forward for me, please? Next one. Thank you. So going back to that chart on spend, while that gives us a kind of static picture of spend, the context of these outcomes we see in the data is better reflected when we look at the spend across these sectors and the NHS over the last decade. Next slide, please. So you can see there, we've got education spend, the yellow line at the top, and everything else looks broadly flat because of the scale of the axes. But if we go to the next slide and take that education spend off, you can see adult social care at the top, the blue line, and children's social care, the red line beneath it, both of which are need and demand-driven curves rising upwards. And we know that cuts have been made to make space for that rising demand and pressures. Next slide, please. And then if we put the NHS spend per capita on top of that, which is the blue line at the top. When we consider the outcomes we often look at as a health and wellbeing board, and indeed, the size of the gap in the outcomes between our most deprived and least deprived areas, the board may wish to consider the degree to which this chart reflects a city which is able to maximise the amount of health in the widest sense of the word, it's able to generate for every pound spent. Next slide, please. We're now going to talk about some local examples and opportunities to improve outcomes and reallocate the spend. Over to you, Jackie.
Thank you. So if, I'll take you through this, sorry, I'm going to ask you to keep pressing buttons. Because it's an interactive bin. So I just thought it'd be worth taking us through the work we're doing around discharge and home first. And as Zach alluded to at the beginning, it's important to remember that the point in which we're working isn't just the point in which people are being discharged from hospital. You have to look at the whole pathway of how people get into hospital, how they flow through the hospital and what happens to them when they come out. So I just wanted to talk through some opportunities that we're looking at. So obviously, somebody that is acutely unwell, there are a range of services in the community that we have that would look to avoid an admission. Some of those work really well and integrated, some work in quite a discreet way. And we're looking at how we make those a more joined-up set of processes. So, but if if those services aren't able to keep you well at home, we know that, for example, you would get transferred to hospital potentially by ambulance. We know, sorry, yeah, keep going. Sorry, I think I've gone out of order on the thing. Just, if you just stop there. So just in terms of ambulances, at the moment, we know we have significant delays in terms of ambulances, ambulance handovers. It is one of the metrics that we are measured on in terms of performance. But it's important to note, yeah, yes, it's an important performance measure, but people being delayed in an ambulance, being delayed in terms of actually accessing care, we know does harm to patients. It also costs the NHS a lot of money to keep people just sat outside a hospital. It it ties up ambulance crews that could be out there. The demand from Yorkshire ambulance service is for us to invest in more ambulance crews because they need to be out on the road responding to those emergency calls. So if we can address the delay in ambulance transfers, then that can free up resources that could be used to better effect. We know that when you get to A and E, there are a number of admissions for what we call ambulatory care-sensitive conditions. So things that actually, evidence shows that you could be treated for and returned home, you don't need to be admitted. But quite often, because we don't have either knowledge or or services to support discharge home, people are admitted into a hospital bed. At the moment, we spend around one hundred and sixty-eight million pounds on acute emergency admissions to an acute hospital. And we spend twenty-three million pounds on admissions to mental health in patient beds. I might have caught up now. When, when people are ready for discharge, we know there's been a significant increase over recent years where their transfer home isn't pre-planned, it's quite often reactive. We've seen a significant rise in the cost of urgent same-day transfers. If if discharge is more better planned, then again, the funding that's been used to spend on taxis and transport home arranged at the last minute could be better used. We do really well in terms of, if you've seen on the Better Care Fund Report I presented earlier, we do really well on the percentage of people that actually get returned to their normal place of residence. So it does show that where we put effort in, we can see positive impacts on those metrics. And then we have a range of services that that we fund out of hospital. So in total, they come to over two hundred and seventy million pounds that we spend on services that support people staying out of hospital. They're not all about discharge, as Greg said earlier. You know, adult social care is far more than just discharge. But that's a whole list of services that we have that support people staying in the community. And again, there are opportunities to make sure that we're not And again, there are opportunities to make sure that we're not just slummy slicing and setting up very discreet services for very discreet needs. What we know about people is quite often they're complex and don't fit into very neat little boxes that we try and put them into. So there's a whole range of opportunities to look at how those services are integrated. I think you'll probably now end up with, yeah, so if you just click through those. So the bits in red are the bits where we have opportunities that if we get our systems and processes right, there, there's opportunity to relook at how that resource is used and could be used more, far more effectively if we address those issues. Yeah, keep going. And then another piece of work that we've been looking at, it isn't one of the Health and Care Partnership priorities at the moment, but just links back to the work we're doing around health inequalities. And Chris, I don't know if you want to talk to this graph around what this represents?
So essentially, this is a graph looking at non-elective, so emergency admissions to secondary care by ICD 10 chapter. So there's a broad disease chapters that are, that people get coded with when they, when they're admitted to, to hospital. And this graph looks at two things, one, the years of life lost in the city due to each of those disease conditions, but also the relative and absolute inequality across those conditions in terms of what we see in terms of the, the non-elective care burden by deprivation. So we know from this analysis of non-elective missions that there is a disproportionately high level of excess emergency admissions for respiratory causes. And that this excess activity is firmly skewed towards the more deprived areas of the city. These are areas where people are more likely to have smoked, more likely to live in areas with poor air quality outside the home, and they're more likely to live in fuel poverty and have damp and mould inside the home. When we dig deeper beneath the broad level coding, we can see a disproportionately high number of, of emergency admissions coded as COPD, influenza, pneumonia and asthma. All of these reasons for admissions can be managed in the community via vaccination, smoking cessation, primary care medicines optimisation, inhaler technique training, pulmonary rehabilitation, et cetera. They're also amenable to more upstream interventions, housing stock improvement, new boilers, improving air quality, et cetera. In addition, we know that these individuals are more likely to have multimorbidity, which Greg was mentioning earlier, of which their respiratory health is only one part. Yet the NHS continues to invest disproportionately in single specialty acute care consultants compared to journalists and community care. And other funding structures like the Better Care Fund also have target measures specifically aimed at individual Multimorbidity is arguably the most significant shift in epidemiology in the last three decades. It is a driver of demand pressures in adult social care and acute medicine, as well as widening the gaps that we see in healthy life expectancy and life expectancy. It's not the aging population, it's multimorbidity and early onset of multimorbidity. Arguably, the current system is not structured with the right allocative efficiency to meet that multimorbidity challenge.
So I think it's, what we were trying to do is just demonstrate that whilst, yeah, certainly I will come and talk about multiple challenges in terms of the financial situation. What we can see is if you, if you put the spend and then the outcomes together, there are opportunities that we can do things differently. What we need to agree is where we put our efforts to make sure that we can make the biggest impact on those. So we have set out some questions, conclusions and some questions for the board. So how do we, how do we make sure that we use the data? It goes back to the challenge, I think, that Lee was giving earlier, how do we actually use the data? How do we make sure we're using methodologies for evaluating value for money that influences our strategies for, for how we use our spend and where we put future investment? What outcome measures should we be developing that we, we don't currently have? And we've talked a lot about the welfare data that we have, but how are we using that? And are there things that we, we really struggle to, to focus on? Because as Chris says, we, we look at activity, we look at widgets. Going back to the, the example of NICE, you know, NICE using technology appraisals is really helpful, but it tends to drive us down the areas where we've got activity and evidence and lots of things that we do isn't backed up by that. You know, you were saying in the news recently, we've had the, the new weight loss drugs and the level of spend that we're now being asked to commit on the back of the evidence on that. As a, as a committee, we might want to think about whether that's where we want to put our spending outcomes. So even though we have technology appraisals, do they actually give us the tools for making the correct decisions? Who and what should be responsible for reviewing programme on improving outcomes? How do we think, how does the committee think this should work? And how should all this be reflected in the health and wellbeing strategy?
Brilliant, thank you Jackie. Chris, I'm going to take chairman's prerogative and just, just say a couple of things first and then I'll bring Greg in. Fantastic, really, really great to see. Just a comment around, you know, some, some of the work that we're doing. I mean, it's great. I think we, we focus quite often in narrow areas, I think it's got to be whole system. The bit around respiratory is fascinating because I don't think, in fact, I'd probably bet my house on it, they're not actually respiratory admissions. The lack of wellbeing admissions, the lack of supported wellbeing admissions, the complex admissions, the admissions for people who don't speak English, the, and, and that's, you know, put my hand up as a clinician, I mean, I'm a gatekeeper, I'm a GP, I'm a gatekeeper, I'm proud to be a gatekeeper. When I'm at the top of my game, I'm quite good at keeping that gate closed and judging that risk. If you put me under massive pressure or you develop me with silly targets that don't really make sense for the job I'm doing, I'm not as good as a gatekeeper. And I think that's, there's no disrespect or criticism to, to any colleagues clinically. That's just normal human behaviour. And, and the bit about thinking of the whole system is we've got to do it together. So nobody has the monopoly in being busy at the moment, it's horrendous everywhere within the NHS and social care. We've got to work together to change things. I've got a colleague who's, who's been a GP like me for 30 years, has just retired at 60. Loved the job, loved seeing the patients demoralised, was his comment. It's demoralising to work, to work out there on the frontline without the proper resources to look after your patients properly. So we've got to do something about it, but the status quo is not sustainable. You know, if we just sit back and we say, okay, we'll just, you know, we'll get more money, we're, we're not going to get more money, the money is sitting in the system. It's around avoiding the admissions bit. If you look at the respiratory admissions, if we avoid 10, 20% of them, that's multiple millions of pounds that can be invested in the wellbeing of the population. So I'm going to run through the questions again, just really quickly, and then I'm, again, chairman's prerogative, I'm going to add one of my own at the end. So what I just want, I think what we're saying is how do we create consistent methodologies for evaluating value for money, both through existing spend and future investment? What outcome measures, for example, wellbeing measures, do we not currently measure that should? And how can this be operationalised? Who or what should be responsible for reviewing the progress towards improving outcomes? How would this work? And how just, should this be reflected in the Health and Wellbeing Board's strategy? The, the one that I'd like to add is, we've got the Health and Wellbeing Board's strategy, it's brilliant. You know, I've got drawers full of strategies, the NHS rewrites strategies every couple of years where we don't deliver them. The Health and Wellbeing Board's strategy is fantastic, we're all signed up to it, it describes a significant left shift of resources. It is the right thing to do. We're signed up to it as a partnership, so all the people that should be around this table, including some of them that are absent today, have signed up to this and signed up to the principles. The ICB, both from place and South Yorkshire perspective, I shined up, I signed up to the Health and Wellbeing Board's strategy and the left shift that we described. So why can't we do it? And, and what I really want to say is what are we going to do about it? Now, we're not a decision-making org, part of the, the system, we're not a decision-making body, but we do have significant influence. We, we do also have our conversations in the public domain. How do we start to get that shift that we all keep promising but just isn't happening? And the necessity to do it is if we don't do it, the system will not continue, the system will fail. And I would say, from my perspective, is already beginning to, to fail. So I really want to try and think around how, how do we make this happen? Greg?
Thanks, Zach. Thanks Jackie, Chris, that was amazing. And a whole bunch of work went into it, so thank you for that. You should get out on tour, we'll get some merch printed for works. A few thoughts and then I'll come on to the questions. Health-wise, health outcome-wise, the, the financial envelope just simply hasn't kept up with the epidemiological shift, the non-communicable disease, which is largely preventable, but not all preventable, and what shift from uni-morbidity to multimorbidity. So if our job is to set the right thing to do, then the right thing to do is do the left shift. We know that things will preclude us from doing that. Our job is to decide are we going to stand firm for the right thing, et cetera. I was surprised to see that we spend more on mental health than comparators. I was surprised on the, the, the primary care thing, and I think of note, we probably spend more on drugs than we do clinicians in primary care, I suspect. I would also bet Zach's house on the respiratory thing being a sort of a coding thing rather than true, true disease. Maybe I wouldn't bet my house, but I'll definitely bet his house. Parochially, now Jackie, I think I noted you said £1,850 per head on, on the ICB envelope, add into that specialised commission, I think it's probably closer to £2,500 per head on treating illness. Very, very parochially, we spend £62 per head on public health, preventing illness. The latter gives us three to four times more health than the former and that budget envelope is going down. So there, again, I'm not arguing for me having more money, but the, the point in principle, if we want more health, we need to shift money. For me, slide 18 was the business end of the macro picture. Add into that the work done by Ben Barr in Liverpool on the long-term impact of the, the spending power of local state, that's why life expectancy is flatlining, let's be really clear on that, really, really clear on that. That's a national decision. Just in terms of the specifics on the question, what outcome measures, healthy life expectancy and the inequality gap in healthy life expectancy, I would stick to and, and defend quite heavily being the, the thing. There's a, something called the Public Health Outcomes Framework, some people call it fingertips, the, the words public and health in there are slightly problematic because then everyone has this parochial thing about what public health is and isn't and all that kind of stuff. But, but there's 250 odd indicators in there that give you a really, really granular picture of outcomes. That's what we should be responsible for and accountable for. Everyone wants to bring it all to, all of the detail, all in one place, all at one, it's too big, we can't cope with that, therefore we boil it to healthy life expectancy. We as a board need to live with the fact that, that we do do as best we can the right thing with regard to air quality or housing or poverty or cardiovascular illness or cancer prevention and treatment, et cetera. Everyone wants us to bring it, all the detail to one board and bring it all together, we can't, and I think we've just got to live with that. But, but the, the key question is the third one, who should be responsible for reviewing progress? No one other than this board, to be honest. We can't bring all of the detail into one board meeting, therefore we do it bit by bit over a long period of time. Sometimes we bring you stories of blittering successes, sometimes we bring you stories of thorny wicked problems, the children in your people's deep dive that we did last time round, was a really good example of some amazing work, let's not forget that. For me, the key question, and I'm mindful of two green councillors in the room, is are the right planes in the air? Carbon, the carbon issue is notwithstanding. Electric, I don't know if we have electric planes yet, but you know what I mean? And broadly, yes, the issue is resourcing, and the issue is the resourcing is going to the right, not the left. And, and I can't change that, collectively we may be able to change that, but the, 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 the sort of drivers perhaps beyond our control are pushing it and our job is are we going to stand against that? Weight management drugs, Wegovy, don't get me started, it will cost us a fortune, it will make a difference to some people, I'd be absolutely clear on that. The manufacturer wants it to be prescribed in primary care, I think that would be a very, very, very foolish thing to do because it will blow your budget, Jackie, and I know you know that. So I won't opine more on Wegovy. So Box.
Thanks Greg, at least we have done something with the green agenda by turning off the heating in here, so. The other thing I was just going to add was, and it's probably not strictly true, was, you know, where we choose to spend our money. It's not strictly true because we're quite often told that we have to spend our money in certain places. And a lot of clinicians would say that's not the, the place to spend the money if we want to get the biggest benefit for the wellbeing of the patients. So I think that's the other bit to tip in, and I guess part of it is how much we can challenge that, how much we don't challenge that, we just use the bits that we can influence. The bits we can influence, I think, are still really quite significant. But, you know, we, we do choose to invest a significant amount of money in, in my view, the wrong place. If you want to change the wellbeing of the population, you would invest it somewhere else. Angela?
Yes. There's too many.
Oh Judy, might you tell your line?
Angus Box.
Oh Angus. Yeah, that's right, yeah. You don't have too many on at once.
Well, I'm going to say something very similar but in a different way. I think the best thing would be for people not get to hospitals, so the avoidable. So how do we do that is what we need to answer. And also we need to explain why discharge is so important. It's not just about saving money, it's the best thing for people, being in hospital for a long time is not good for you. So that's why we should be pushing it, not because we need to save money and think that is really important. How do we do that? We can only do that if we shift the money somewhere else. So we always talk in, you know, we had the meeting on mental health and I know the mental health discharge is a particular difficult point at the moment in Sheffield, but quite a lot of those people that are on acute health board, they shouldn't even be there, is they got there because there was nowhere else for them to do. So when we had that health themed, Health and Wellbeing Board, we kept talking about, you know, secondary care and people that were already in acute services, but what did we need to talk more about is how we got there? And people shouldn't even be in hospital, we should really invest on people being healthy and not, and their wellbeing rather than them being cured and plaster being put on a wound or something. And I think it's really important, so we keep going around in circles, but it's, it's important because by doing the right thing, we will also eventually save money because we don't need to do all those really expensive treatments, et cetera, in hospital.
Okay, I think it's Mike next, can I just say, if anyone wants to speak, just pop your hand up rather than, than the buttons, so Mike?
Thanks, yeah. I found that really thought provoking and was left with a strong impression that value for money is unlikely to be delivered by aiming at disease entities. And probably even the multimorbidity idea might need drawing out a bit more. I don't know what to call it, whether there's something at play that's a kind of principal component or a factor or something like that, I don't know what to call it, but it, but it looks a bit like anxiety and depression and blood pressure and tobacco and lipids and glucose and all that kind of stuff and, and weight, seen from one lens. And then from another lens, it's insecure housing, problems with education, addictions, unemployment and stuff like that. And then it's that kind of scrambled altogether, so it's like, it's lipids and it's housing and it's discrimination and it's addictions and it's, you know, whatever. And it, I was trying to think about how to set that out as the thing to try and get hold of, rather, rather than thinking it's something to be deconstructed into its kind of quantum components, each to be attacked one by one by a strategy, and rather see it as this kind of necessarily fuzzy thing, but the fundamentally important thing that probably explains most of the bad stuff that goes on in people's lives and contributes to these awful discrepancies in life expectancy. So I'm not, it's not probably a particularly helpful comment in that it doesn't go anywhere apart, I'm trying to express my own frustration, trying to think about what would that look like to say that's the thing that we need to really focus on getting hold of?
Emma?
So yeah, obviously I'll be talking about it the next item, but I think this is about people, it's not about conditions, and we need to focus our energy on the people that live in the city, not on the conditions that they have or may have, and I think that's part of the problem. So again, I, I'd echo the work that you've done, I think Greg's right, we can't, we can't do everything, but I, I do think we look at this stuff, you know, year in, year out, you know, I've sat around many Health and Wellbeing Board tables in my career, but this is about policy change, isn't it? And I think that's, you know, so is our, you know, as Greg said previously, and as, as you've just said, this is much, this is much more than health, isn't it? This is about the wider determiners, how we address them. When you look at those graphs and you see the spend and, you know, the, the lack of investment in local authorities, the reduction in spending in local authorities over the last 10, 15 years, has had a massive impact on health and treatment costs. And I think we need to recognise that. And I think, you know, as a chef of place and through our Health and Care Partnership and beyond, we need to look at the total resources we have, you know, where do we think we should, we should direct that? And I think you're right, Zach, we are often told And I think you're right, Zach, we are often told to spend it on this and spend, well, what if we didn't? You know, who are we accountable to? I'm accountable, yes, I've got this badge on. I'm accountable to the people I serve, and they're the people that live in Sheffield. And I don't, as I say, I don't know whether we just need to be a bit braver around what we do. Yes, I'll always have my masters in the NHS England, but I do think, you know, collectively, we see this data, we see this evidence. As a system, should we really be thinking about, you know, seeking forgiveness, perhaps just to do something different in this space? My next item, we'll talk to that in a very little bit, but I just think, you know, we're a city with huge ambition, we've got the City Goals work coming up, we've got some great leaders, you know, some professional, clinical, some, you know, voluntary sector, community leaders. I just think we've got a real opportunity to be different and to use this data to help drive that discussion morally. Thank you.
Thanks, Emma. I think the bit for me is that, you know, we've obviously got to drive productivity, and I think there are productivity gains that you can get in any business, and I think particularly in the NHS. But I think we're also getting to, we're going to make some really difficult decisions. And, you know, it is about actually looking after the few or looking after the many, and I think that's, it's a difficult one. I mean, if you're one of the few, or if you've got a relative that's one of the few, it's a really difficult conversation to have, but I think that's where we need to go. Chris, I think you're next.
Yeah, so I'll take your bet on the respiratory data, but I would say that I would bet my house on the fact that that data does tell us four things. It tells us about where those people are coming from in the city. It tells us about how they are interacting with healthcare and when they are interacting with healthcare. And it also tells us something about the size of the gap that we're dealing with, but it also tells us that that gap is amenable to narrowing. We often have conversations at this board about, well, what can we do? You know, some of the data I put up often feels like a kind of Sisyphean task that's kind of helpless, but there are things that can be done to narrow that gap. It is contingent on resourcing those things, however.
I think Judy was next.
I want to fall on for Emma's head, and it's about that left shift idea, that balancing. Greg said we're not a decision-making body, but if we have levers and if we have influence, which levers are we trying to get hold of and who are we trying to influence? Because I've seen so many presentations about rebalancing, and we all know what we want to do, but the crunch question about how that decision is made, and if we're going to be brave, who's going to be brave in what forum? I don't know the answer to that. It seems to be unless we, because otherwise it's a pipe dream, isn't it? It carries on in the same way. How are we going to do that? Which levers and who are we influencing? Is it, are we going to the ICB? Is it Helen going to the ICB or my colleague? Where is it? How do we do that?
So part answer to that, and my slight fear is that we work within a system that if people do stand up and are counted, they're picked off. You know, if you're not going along with the system, you get massacred, basically. So we've got to do it together. So we've got to support the people that are going to be exposed if we try to do some of this stuff and make it clear that we're behind them. And I think also, and this is where, you know, Healthwatch can play an amazing part, I think we've got to take the population along with us, we've got to have that conversation with the population. Because normally, when you do have that conversation, the population want to come behind you. The population, or my experience, when you do go out and you talk to people, is they'd much rather be at home and be supported at home rather than being in a hospital setting. But it is difficult, it's not easy, and the people who do actually stand up and try to be counted are tend to be quite exposed.
I mean, are we thinking that we really want Sheffield City Council to make some statements around this, that we back up? Or who does that? What is that?
Do you want to commit to that, Greg, and then I'll bring other people in? Sorry, Douglas.
Our political leaders may want to say, but so for what it's worth, I'm happy to say no to must-be-dones, always have been. We take a sort of a value and evidence-based judgement on the time, and I'm happy to stand behind or in front of political or managerial leaders to justify why we're saying no to things that must be done. I've supported the leader of this council when 100 taxi drivers were shouting at him about implementing a clean air zone. We're not doing it to make taxi drivers' lives hard, we're doing it to protect children's lungs. So, and I'm happy to stand in front of, behind Emma when someone's, someone further up the NHS food chain is shouting at Emma for saying no to something or other. There's a bit about discretionary decisions, and there's a bit about every decision point all partners to the Health and Wellbeing Board have to make, have a hard conversation is, how does that discretionary decision square with a strategy that Chris and Jackie have broadly set out? And sometimes that will be justifiable, sometimes that won't be justifiable. And that's the kind of the being brave point. And the final point, which I think we've lost in the detail of what Chris said earlier on the Joint Strategic Needs Assessment, on the gap, there's more outcome to be had from focusing our resource from those at the bottom of the line, marginal return-wise, than shifting the population average. Therefore, if you want, if you want to get, if success in a vaccination programme is, does Lee, in her practice, have 95% uptake of MMR? And I bet you don't, I bet you're nowhere near it. I'd rather focus my energy and attention on getting Lee from 60-odd percent, is my guess, to 90% than getting from the city average, which is 91% to 95%, because there's way more gain there. And I'm happy to publicly say that, and I wouldn't want to put my political masters on the spot, however.
So I'm going to bring Douglas in around the political bit and then bring Lee in, if that's okay?
Well, okay. I was going to say, Judy's set up the question of, you know, who needs to do what? But, I mean, looking around the room here, doesn't seem to be that contentious that we could do more money, do more work, get more value if we put more money into prevention. Secondary care costs a shedload of money and just treats people who are ill. Don't think it's the first time we've said this, you know, but, so the question is, at what point do we get away from admiring the problem, or so we'll put it, to working out where we are? And actually, is it the role of this board to develop something that says, well, actually, if it's down to us, then these are the priorities for what we should do that will actually make people healthier? And, you know, I think the term is that it's not just people, you're putting more money into medicines. We could do a piece of work as this board to say, actually, there are some things that are priorities. So I've identified that, you know, respiratory problems and admissions are off the page. We could do something about that, and Greg's mentioned things like the Clean Air Zone. So that is a thing that the council has done, and it was a hell of a battle to get, actually, it took several years to get that, actually many years, and it's been a big, long-term thing. And there was quite a lot of very difficult standing up at that point. So that's one example of something that was pushed through, and I know a lot of people in the health sector were actually really helpful on that. But maybe we do need to have something that sets out a number of principles of things that we should do that we all try and endorse. And then, once we've endorsed it, we all feel more comfortable about standing up when these issues come along and say, actually, no, I back this because with all my colleagues on the Health and Wellbeing Board, we back this, and right across the medical sector. I mean, you know, from my experience of doing transport stuff, so I was executive member covering transport a couple of years ago, and we had things like, you know, the really political controversy about closing Pinson Street. Of course, it wasn't just about Pinson Street, it's about, you know, the balancing of, you know, do we give priority to people who want to drive in private cars to the city centre? Or do we give priority to, you know, a much, much better way of looking at people's, you know, life, wellbeing, you know, experience in the city centre, better means a transport. And that's why it was a battle that, you know, we took on. Lumber stood up. We had a fantastic response and petition from people who were actual healthcare professionals, which was a really instrumental thing in moving that political argument over. And, you know, I think it's fair to say that got a good success. And then, you know, I mean, my background was advice work, I did a lot of advice work in passing across the city, you know. So, I mean, we need some securing things, I mean, you know, actually, it turns out I can cure mental health problems. I'm not a medical, and that's a bit of a big claim, I know, but the point is that, you know, really small amounts of money, if they're going to advice work, because they deal with individual people sorting out things, it makes a massive difference, and you can do it at scale. We could say, as a board, it will be a priority to actually put a lot more work, money into that. We need to do that before we identify where the money comes from. We might later come back and say, actually, we can see where the money's going, we need to make a hard decision about chopping a bit of that off. You know, that's a really difficult decision, but we could start by doing a programme work to say what we think would be the top priorities if we want to make people healthier. Of you, Jeff?
Thanks, thanks, Douglas. I'm mildly asthmatic, and I don't really need to use my inhaler when I come into town now, so thank you for closing Pinson Street. Yeah, thank you. Lee, do you want to commit?
I just think of the cost savings on your inhaler now and the planet because of that. I'm sort of, in all these conversations, you sort of have that balance between despair, that we've been here so many times, and we've, you know, heard this so many times, and I was in a conversation recently this week where somebody just said, I am bewildered that we're still having this comment. And I thought, that's a good word, it's bewilderment. But also hope in that actually there's the energy to try and do something different. And it feels very much like, sometimes I have with patients around weight management. Actually, it's simple. Weight management is simple, but it's not easy. It's really difficult. And I think in a sense that we, simplistically, we can see what might be the right thing to do, but actually it would be really difficult to do it because we work within a system, but particularly within health, that's got this constant suction of funds and resource towards the high-cost, end-stage treatment of illness because of health promotion failure. And we have to understand within that that a lot of the procedures are not evidence-based. And I think we also have to understand the drivers behind those costs. There is stuff in there about people's careers and people's specialists, that means that the pharmaceutical industry driving a lot of the decisions as well, and there's a political drive as well. And we've got to be really wise and canny to that. But also, it means that we're funding the failure of that health promotion, and if, as Chris said in his presentation, if we're choosing not to fund health promotion, illness prevention, then actually we're choosing to increase our costs. You know, it's a decision that we're making, it's not a saving by not funding that, we're actually increasing our costs. And the problem with this is, I think, the decisions can't be made, with the greatest threat to elected members, by politicians, can't even possibly be made by people in the room. And I think these are ethical decisions that actually we need to show the public and go, actually, look at that graph, does that make sense to spend on the end stage of things? Or is it better to spend more on prevention? And I think there's really difficult conversations to be had about, actually, do we really want to fund very, very expensive force-line chemotherapy that's not going to heal someone but may keep them alive a little bit longer but with very poor quality of health because the side effects are so terrible that the oncologists might have said, actually, we've got this new drug, you know, we can give it a go? Or do we want to take that money and do we want to fund early years below two? And actually, if we think about qualities and in terms of what the benefits that will be to the whole of the society and the system is, do we gain anything from the very end-stage terminal care? And I know this is really contentious, and forgive me if there's anybody who's actually facing this at the moment, but actually, if we took that money and funded it in early years, we make a difference to a child's ability to get a decent education, which makes a difference to their ability to be able to get a decent job, which makes a difference to their ability to, actually, do they stay out of the prison system? And actually, that makes a difference to the funding that's available, you know, and the contributions they make in terms of tax. From a sort of health economics point of view, these are really complicated but not simple as well. And I think, just recently, the example of looking at, again, a contentious issue, abortion in Ireland, so contentious, really widely differing views, strongly held views, but actually, when you took that out of the hands of the politicians and you gave it to a citizens' assembly, actually, the outcomes were more compassionate, more wise, people felt heard, and were good. And I wonder whether some of this is whether we can actually have these debates in the equivalent of citizens' assemblies, you know, the voice of the people, what do people want? And I know for individuals, they can be polarised, and it's difficult, but actually, evidence seems to show that we can get a very compassionate and wise solution. In terms of what Mike was saying, and, you know, of the whole person and how we look at it, I took the fantastic Local Insights data and I plotted out all the long-term conditions for all the different PCNs across the city, and it shows a really interesting graph, which is, you've got all this sort of long-term conditions and the things which are driving the high-end cost, but the three big peaks across the whole city are for depression and obesity and hypertension. And they sort of appear in the outcomes that we've got to hit as general practice, but not really. And I thought, gosh, if you could just concentrate on, you know, on depression and doing something different about that, which may well be driving the obesity, which may well be driving the hypertension, you could change the outcomes. So there are things that we can do. And in terms of how people access their healthcare, again, looking at inequalities. So we've got the inverse care law, which is, I know, we know, we talk about the wider determinants of health and how that drives a lot of this, but when you have an illness, your access to good quality healthcare determines 50 to 80% of your outcomes, is really important. And at the moment, we have sort of a one-size-fits-all, it's equally distributed across the city, it's not directed towards where the need is greater. So that is something, again, that we could think about.
Thank you, Lee. I can't miss the opportunity of mentioning the intercall audit once again. So this was 12 years ago. 20% of patients admitted to hospital didn't need to be in a hospital setting, and that was, the current system was in place to avoid that admission. So that was purely a clinical decision, which is around that complexity we described. If you shifted the resource into the community setting, you could take that up to 30 to 40%. Now, 30 to 40% of, what was that, 163 million? Jackie? We're not short money. I mean, there is resource that's actually sitting within the system, we've just got to be brave enough to actually shift the resource to do that. Judy's next, Jackie next.
So I think quite a lot of what I was thinking about has been said. I think, just going back to the question of how many times have we talked about it and why have we not been successful? I think there is just an issue of public debate and how we do that. I think there's an issue of, you know, we shouldn't dismiss, in our frustration for wanting change, we shouldn't dismiss that there are lots of good care and we have illness that needs to be treated, and the public looks to us to trust that service will be there if they need it. And there is just something about, if we dismiss that expectation, we probably walk past why, you know, why we failed in the past. So there is just something about recognising not everything is bad, not everything, you know, it's a demand-led system, a consequence of multiple years of failure, but it is there, you know, we can't just dismiss that if somebody has a stroke today, they need to know that they can go to hospital and get the right intervention. So I just think we need to be balanced in how we think about the problems and what's got in the way in the past, and not just assume because we're all sat here in agreement about what is needed, it will happen. So I think there is just some thoughtfulness we need to give about, you know, multiple professionals give good quality care because they're faced with the outcomes of, you know, people's health that they have to deal with, and we're not just going to assume that that will disappear because we're thinking differently.
There's always still going to be the need for the medical model, but I guess it's only for the people that really need it, that's the important thing. I mean, I, you know, I'm proud to be part of the NHS still, I'm maybe not as proud as I was 30 years ago, I'd like to get back there, but it's about a shift, isn't it? So we've still got to do the medical stuff and absolutely do that to the best of our ability. Do it together, combine the pathways, you know, don't have a, when I hear conversations about the primary-secondary care interface, that kind of describes them, we've got it wrong. So we need to think about it as a continuum.
Can I just?
I think, yeah, do you want to come back?
Can I just come back on that as well? Because I was thinking about exactly that point as I was driving in, because my bike's not working, this morning, thinking, actually, I have been on the receiving end of a lot of secondary care treatment over my years, non-preventable. So, yes, absolutely, we need to have really good, if you're in a car accident, you want to know that you're going to have gold standard treatment at Northern General and their trauma unit, absolutely. The problem is that even that is compromised by all the stuff that's in there that shouldn't be in there. And again, we haven't really talked about mental health within this as well, and what proportion of that acute spend in the physical sector is actually driven by an inability to fund adequately the mental health services, which could prevent a lot of that, you know, and again, that should be part of the public debate as well. And again, that should be part of the public debate as well. As I said, it's simple, but it's not easy.
Thanks, Lee. I think it's Meg next.
Thanks. Again, some stuff already been said, so I don't want to repeat. But I was just thinking back to, was it in May, when we had the Health and Wellbeing Board Health Inequalities event? And a lot of these conversations were had there and there was a lot of support for the idea of doing things differently. And we looked, we sort of had speakers from other parts of the country where they have done things differently. So I think that gives me hope that it's possible when you look at things like the Wigan Deal and what's happened or happening in kind of West Yorkshire and other parts of the country. So I suppose I'm kind of holding on to that, that it is possible because we know that other places have done it, so why can't we? And I think, just thinking about the bringing communities with us and linking that to the outcomes that we should measure. And kind of what Mike said, I think, you know, what Mike was talking about earlier was about whole person, whole family, whole household approach that we need to take. So, you know, what should we measure? We should measure customer satisfaction within a household. Have we taken that kind of whole person, whole household, whole family approach and successfully delivered what that family and that household need? And that involves us working beyond the boundaries or parameters of our professions and working collaboratively. So I just think we need to kind of keep that in mind as well as we go through this, that it's not about, you know, primary care versus secondary care versus the voluntary sector or social. So actually, we need to really think beyond the boundaries of our kind of professions, if you like.
I think it's Ben next.
Yeah, thank you very much. So just like to say, I think the report was very good. The concept of prevention doesn't appear to be controversial amongst all of the members here. I think there's a common consensus amongst us that that needs to be a priority. I think that needs to be clearly reflected in the strategy, maybe even more explicit than it is currently. And I've just been refreshing myself on the terms of reference of the board in respect to some of the questions around what our role is in this. And the terms of reference are quite explicit that it's for us to agree the strategy and then hold agencies to account for the delivery of that. And I wonder where our accountability piece comes in around this. So where, and the other area is around the joint development of strategies. So where is our voice in jointly developing strategies? And I suppose they're the two obvious starting points because I'm really conscious that we can get into quite a lot of micro examples of where this is relevant. And each one of those micro examples will have different stakeholders who have strong opinions on either side of the fence. And some of the decisions are very difficult around where we're putting funding and things like that. But the reality that this board is not going to address those. We are a strategic board that should be looking at very high level directions of travel. And I think we can very quickly get dragged down too much into weeds, which creates basically ineffectiveness and inertia. So I think we just need to go back to the core terms of reference and keep that focus in mind.
That's a very good point, thank you. Chris?
I think most of my points have been made, but I would just say with regard to Lee's point about the amount of money that we spend on fourth, fifth line cancer therapies, for example, evidence suggests there's no societal preference for that, actually. There's a political exception with the Cancer Drugs Fund, et cetera. But as a society, all surveys indicate we would rather be investing that money onto younger people. And within the context of end of life, we would rather spend the money on the kind of things that Ellen has often talked about with regards to compassionate Sheffield and the things that happen around end of life, not the pharmaceutical interventions that we often don't invest enough money in either. And then the other thing I was going to say is that, just to hammer home this point about what we do actually measure. So with regards to the things like the discharge system that Jackie was talking about earlier, we often measure the success of things like discharge to assess and home first by the reductions in length of stay that we see in hospital. We don't measure the harm that is currently done to people who spend excess bed days in hospital. So we don't have a reliable comparator to say, well, the health gain of sending that individual home and having home assess is this much. The way in which Nice would if they were appraising it as a technology appraisal or intervention. So we don't capture a lot of that benefit that Jackie was talking about in terms of the good that we do in the healthcare system. And equally, we don't capture the kind of harm avoided by doing things differently. And it's actually not that difficult to capture. There are ways in which that data can be captured and measured across the system.
Helen?
I think maybe my comments are more relevant for the paper that's coming actually, but we're in this discussion. And I think it's really useful to be reminded of our purpose as a Health and Wellbeing Board. But I think one of the things we can do and focus on is, are some of the principles that we're describing. And it's in Chris's paper, actually. There's three things, the orientation, so what are we focused on in order to get to where we want to be? And that has to be people centric. And I think we've talked about that in understanding whole life, not just the health bit or the illness bit of somebody's life. There's the purpose. So the purpose we want to create in creating health is connectivity, agency, so people being involved in decisions. And capacity, capacity for better life, capacity for better health. And so I think our mission, and this is in the city goals, which are out for review at the moment. One of them is, tells the story of Sheffield, of thriving communities. I think that's a really good mission for us. And if we focus on that kind of guiding star in our work, I think we can collaborate more effectively with that focus. And I think that's the kind of energy and where we need to put our focus and energy, because I think it is a really difficult conversation. And I know that isn't about what we're measuring, but I think there's just something about as a board, you know, if we're asking those questions each and every time when we come to things, I think that's the right thing to focus on.
Is it Jake?
Yeah.
Yeah, hi Jake.
So talking a bit about like the mental health that was mentioned earlier. And as a care leaver myself, I know from the Bright Spots survey that we did, that a lot of care leavers and people in care need that mental health support. Now, I talked about to Greg earlier about what we could do. Greg said that, you know, the easiest way to have mental health support specifically for care leavers, the easiest way would be to remodel the NHS, what's already there. And of course, you know, maybe the NHS would have to move around their budget, maybe possibly to make that happen, even with remodelling. But maybe not as much if it was a full on separate thing. And maybe what I can go back from this and talk to the rest of my team, my manager and whatever, and my co workers, is that, you know, even though we know that young people want that, we don't know what they want it to look like. So if we then go and do that and ask, hey, we know you want this, but what do you want it to look like? And then we can get that feedback and then hopefully, when we, because we do like scrutiny panels, and NHS is part of that. So we then can then feed that back to them and then make that happen. And, you know, we're hoping, I think this is very ambitious, to have that done by the end of 2024. But is there anything else that would help with that, with your influence or anything else to help on, like, on, like, to have the wheels moving towards that goal?
Thank you, Jake. And apologies for not welcoming you to the Health and Wellbeing Board. I didn't spot you in the background there, so thanks for that contribution. I think part of it is that engagement with our population that we serve. I think we do it sporadically. I think we do it in little pockets that are really good. We've done amazing redesigns, but we really have done it. But it isn't just sort of part of the everyday discussions that we have. And I think when it comes to where we shift resources, I think that's got to be talking to the people that we serve and actually bringing them along with us. So I appreciate our contribution, thank you. Emma?
Yeah, so I suppose what I want to say, this is, Health and Wellbeing Board isn't about the NHS. You know, we talk about the NHS all the time, but it's not about the NHS. It's the wider determinants that drive demand and that's what we're talking about. So I suppose it comes a little bit back to your point, Ben, around actually, so what is our role? It's about connecting with the other areas that address the wider concerns of health. I think it's about trying to push upwards around policy. It's certainly not about bashing secondary care or NHS hospitals who provide fabulous services for those people who need it. And the reason that we treat all those people is because competition has largely been the mantra of the NHS for the last 20 years. That's the system we've worked in and we're lucky that we've got two specialist hospitals actually in Sheffield. Sadly, some of the people that we talk about later on will never access that care because they don't know how to. So I think we just need to put in context that the NHS is one part health and wellbeing. And actually, we can do things with our budget, but actually it's about the total pledge resource, you know. The people that, you know, we're following police officers in often, we're following, you know, the fire service in. This is about public sector reform as well as just, you know, not just about the NHS. But going back to Helen's point, you know, this is all about people, it's all about our citizens and how we work with them differently and how we trust and empower them. And what we do, I think, here is around, is really challenging the policies, the policies that work against each other that often mean we're getting far too many people in places that we wouldn't want them to be. So a bit of a ramble, but I think it's just how we connect things and that inclusive growth agenda. How do we make sure that the economic growth in the city that we want to generate is actually impacting on the people that most need it?
Yeah, thanks, Emma. So chairman's program again, I'll just come in briefly and then we'll take maybe just one last, sorry, two last comments. So I absolutely agree with that. I mean, we've spoken for some time, should this be the wellbeing board? And should health be a pillar that sits underneath it with all the other pillars? Because it almost feels as if the health bit has been elevated to a level that it doesn't deserve. And I think for me, what we're talking about is wellbeing and I get Jackie's bit. I mean, when, you know, when you start out as a new fresh clinician, you want to make everyone do better. And you want to do that just by prescribing and then you suddenly realise, particularly in general practice, there's so many other factors that play a part that you can't do it. And actually, some of these other factors are much more beneficial to the patient if you can sort them. So the good example would be some of the care navigation that we do, you know, the social prescribing, very low level stuff that actually can make a massive difference to lives and is very cheap to do. So I'm just talking about a shift away from the over focus on the medical bit, you know, we need the medical model, but we need to probably just do a little bit of shift the other way if we can do that. Greg, do you want to come in?
I was going to go first and then Greg's going to summarise it all for us and tell us what's happening next. And just to pick up on your point, Emma, exactly right. And I think that's part of the challenges. So if we look at the paper and the savings that Chris outlined, savings aren't all in health, do you know? They're in education, they're in the police, they're in the judiciary, they're in, you know, other places. And that's part of the challenge is it's not joined up. So why would one department invest if another one's going to get the benefit and actually may not get it for another five, 10, 20 years? And it's having that sort of overall joined up way of working, I think it's really important. But I would say that a massive part of the spend is on health. And a massive part of that spend is probably not where it's doing much good. And it's just costing an awful lot and often is making people worse, is actually not improving their health, it's making it worse. So that is something that we could, you know, in the short term, do something quite constructive with, I think.
Thanks, Lee. Do you want to have a final comment, Greg?
I was going to have a go at some more, unless you want to, Chair. Cool. So, right, thank you. That's dead helpful and I've made notes. It's a hard conversation and worth noting that health or disease, more to the point, is the fastest growing part of the UK economy. That's a choice that the UK economy has made. And at some point, we won't be able to afford missiles and the army and things of that ilk. So we can do what we can do on that one. This is a Health and Wellbeing Board, we've willfully made that an equal partnership between the NHS, the council and voluntary community sector. And I think we've lived up to that and others may want to challenge me, but don't do it now because you'll extend the conversation. We've willfully made it about health and wellbeing, not about NHS and social care integration, which a lot of other health and wellbeing boards have gone down that path of in different parts of the country. And I'll remind you of the goal of the strategy is the gap in healthy life expectancy. That was very willful and very, very deliberate. And we have just about held that gap over the last decade or so. And given the context, that's no mean feat, that hasn't happened by magic. Second point, the sort of the Dana and Mike and Ben articulated it way more beautifully than me. The sort of the, do we deconstruct stuff into constituent parts or do we keep, and then doing so, maybe get lost in the weeds? Or do we focus on the big high level thing, really difficult, it's attention. Folk want both high level and granular. We just have to hold the tension, to be honest. I think we need to do both because you need to sort of kick the tyres on certain areas from time to time to see whether they fall out. We talked about discretion points on resourcing and at every discretion point, you have a conversation about, does it square with the overarching strategy? Folk will, in that, will want really, really granular. We may not have the granular detail at our hands at that time, but we need to kind of be focused on the strategy. That's our job, to be honest. A job is to assess need and to set and hold a strategy. So something about bravery, we've talked about, our job is to help our leaders, there are a couple of them in the room, be brave and make difficult decisions and sometimes say no to stuff which isn't in the keeping of what we want to achieve strategy wise. Where is the money? There's plenty of it and a lot of it is about allocative efficiency of existing spends, rather than pretending that there's going to be loads of new money. Public sector finances, we all know are awful. So our job is around reorganising existing spends and maybe to develop the mechanism for the shift and be a bit granular and a bit pointy and a bit specific about the shift. What are we backing? What's our top 10? Lee made an impassioned plea for obesity, depression, blood pressure. I could come up with three or four more. Therein lies the problem because it's, we'll all have different views of what might be on the top 10. So there is a bit of a thing there. We're not so good on accountability on the strategy, I think, and Ben made that point, reminding of us our terms of reference. I think we're not so good on that, to be honest. And then again, there's a bit of a high level versus getting lost in the weeds in the detail to be done there. An interesting conversation about moral and ethical conversations about fourth line chemo or seventh line, this, that and the other, and there's some tricky stuff there. I was struck by the points about citizens' assembly. I was struck by the points about being better at measuring the important, measuring something, at important touch points. And lastly, I'll never forget Lee's point about the inverse care law. Healthcare matters to people's health, particularly those who are poorly, really, really matters. We're not very, we're not very good at the inverse care law. It's alive and well in this town, just as it's alive and well everywhere else. That comes back to a point about the resourcing of primary care, which for me is the business end of the system for people with multiple illnesses. Chair, that's my attempt to summarise, but you may have a better go than me.
Perfect, I'm quite happy with that, Greg. I guess let's just not make this Groundhog Day. I mean, I'm not going to make a Groundhog Day. This is my last sort of shot at this because we've got to make it happen. So, you know, let's have some difficult conversations, let's be brave in this space and let's try and make some of this stuff happen. So thanks, everyone. Thanks, Jackie, thanks, Chris. Welcome, Jake, thank you for coming. Why don't we try and start just as close to 20 past as we can? So maybe just have 10 minutes, if that's okay, and then we'll finish the meeting. Thank you. Welcome Lucy. Good to have you here, joining us. Who's taking us? Is it a double act, Emma and Lucy?
I'll just introduce it, if that's okay. And then obviously let the person who does all the work do the talking. So, yeah, so thanks very much for allowing us to talk about this today. I think it really builds on all of the stuff that we've been talking about. So just for context, it's one of our five health and care partnership priorities. When I came to Sheffield about 18 months ago, God, it feels a long time ago. I thought that in a, from a health perspective, we talked about health inequalities a lot, but we couldn't really describe what it is we were trying to do. So luckily, it was one of the priorities agreed in the partnership board. And what we're looking at really is trying to address the wider determines of health. This isn't something that the NHS is doing. We're working in partnership predominantly with our local authority as ever and all our colleagues, particularly the BCSE in this space. But we're trying to develop a new approach to how we address health inequalities, how we work with our communities in a very different way, how we work with people and families and communities and not through diseases or through professionals. And we're looking to develop sort of one neighbourhood at a time. Again, just being really clear that these health inequalities exist, but if we don't start to target the most deprived areas of our city, we'll never, ever do anything. So we have got a very small amount of resource, but it needs to be long term. So we have got a very small amount of resource, but it needs to be long term. And it can't just be a one off pilot, it needs to affect policy change. And again, we're hoping that some of this work will do that and Lucy will talk us through that in terms of details. But yeah, so really great to be here and I'll hand over to Lucy, who's our lead for the community development inclusion work. And Lee is obviously our clinical lead for this work too. So thank you Lucy.
Thank you everyone, nice to be here. I think my mic's on. So I just, I'll take the paper as a read, but I think, you know, there's a lot in there, so I'll pull out some key points. Emma's already done a great introduction. But as she said, it is a new approach for the NHS, it's not a new approach, it's certainly not a new approach for the council. You know, it's tried and tested, you know, worldwide, but it's very different for us because it's a non-medical model. It's not about commissioning health services, it's not really about health in its narrow sense. It is about different relationships with communities, it's about empowering communities to lead happier and healthier lives. And we've got three aims, so on page three. To connect people to each other in their communities, to build community capacity of individuals and neighbourhoods to help them address issues that are important to them. And to devolve power to communities. So there's lots of work happening in the city in around the wider determines of health, reducing health inequalities, you know, empowering people. So this isn't the only piece of work and actually it connects to and complements those other pieces of work. And we recognise there's loads of brilliant work going on in the city. But why are we going to do this and why now? We know that we've got disempowered communities, we've got disconnected communities, people who live in poor health have really poor outcomes. Particularly in the North East, they're big users of public services, but they have no say or very little say over what decisions, what happens to them or decisions over their lives. And we've got an overwhelmed system. So that's not just health and care, but that's also the voluntary community sector. And this plan is to help solve some of those problems. It's not a silver bullet, it's not panacea, but it'll help to go some way to helping solve those problems. Within the Race Equality Commission report, there's also a recommendation for the NHS to look at readdressing historical imbalances in funding to black minority ethnic communities. And we want to use this model neighbourhood as one way of doing that for the NHS. I talk about in the paper that we know that health creation happens outside of statutory services, it happens in communities. And voluntary community sector have a key role in that. So we want to invest in the voluntary community sector, to invest in communities, to drive forward improvements in their own lives and their own communities. So this is really about improving lives. The driver is not statutory services and overwhelmed services. But we know if we get this right and we create health and we create empowered communities, it will have an impact on the system. It will help people with physical health and mental health. And on page four, I do talk through some of the stats, you know, around dementia, voluntary community sector, sorry. Cardiovascular disease, loneliness and isolation have all been linked to premature death. So if we can bring people together, we can really improve their physical and mental health. And there are four areas in the North East that we're focusing on. So we picked Foundry, primary care networks. We picked the North East because it has the highest rate of deprivation in the city. And we picked Foundry because of all the 15 primary care networks in the city, it has the highest rates of deprivation. And also it has the highest number of people living from an ethnic minority background. And we picked four areas, we looked at middle super output areas. And they are Burngrieve and Grimesthorpe, Firth Park, Favale and Crabtree and South of the Green East. And within those, they're all in the top decile for deprivation in the country, so massively deprived areas. There are four parts of the plan for this year. So it's, I would say that it's a multi-year programme, so this is about a long-term commitment to these communities. It's not a pilot, it's not about doing something for a few years and withdrawing the funding and moving on. We want this to change the way that we work, change the way we work with communities. And like Emma said, we want to do this one neighbourhood at a time, so starting these four and move around. But this paper we've got in front of you details year one plan and it's less detailed for year two to five, but we're starting with a five year plan. So the parts this year are sense making. Like we said, the North East has a lot going, a lot right, sorry, a lot going on in the area that's great. It's got vibrant voluntary community sector, it's got a really innovative primary care network. But we do know there are issues, we need to understand current investment, what didn't work, what worked. We know the new deal for Burngrieve was a massive investment, so we need to get underneath that. We need to look at current funding, what works, we need to understand the voluntary community sector and bring all those issues to the surface. So we're working with New Local and another person to help with the sense making, desktop research, interviews and community engagement. The second part is investment into voluntary community sector and we're going to do this to help sustain the voluntary community sector. Because we know we can't transform the areas if the voluntary community sector isn't thriving. And actually, there's a risk that a lot of organisation will close their doors this year if we don't. And also one off grants for small grants to connect people, so to bring people together to run dance classes, exercise classes, cricket, sewing, whatever it might be. And then community engagement, because this is not our plan, it's not Emma's priorities, it's not my priorities. We want to develop four plans for each of the areas based on the priorities of those communities. And so we're going to do some co-production with those communities led by the voluntary community sector. And hopefully by the end of the year, it's probably more looking like April now, each of those areas will have a plan. And as part of that, we will build capacity of the voluntary community sector. And we're hoping that once we get those plans, well, we know when we get those plans, there'll be lots of issues that come out. It's not in the gift of communities or voluntary community sector to solve themselves. So we'll need a system response plan for the North East. And I see those two things as building blocks for collaborating for health. So the piece of work that Health and Wellbeing Board is sponsoring, looking at a Sheffield deal. So actually, what can we do in the North East? How can we work, how can the public sector work differently with those communities? How can we empower communities? And hopefully that might lead and roll out to some citywide change. And years two to five is about delivery. It will include a rolling programme of investment for the voluntary community sector, which will be sustainable and accessible. Continual small grants and also funding for capacity building voluntary community sector and individuals and communities. And then longer term, moving towards participatory budgeting. So the health and care partnership devolving 1% of its budget to communities in Sheffield and starting and learning from that in the North East. Evaluation is massive in this, we need to prove the case that actually this works. So actually this improved people's lives, but actually it does help the system as well. So we're going to work in partnership with New Local, they're going to develop an evaluation framework for us. And really help us present that case because we need it to lead to policy change locally and nationally. And we want it to leverage in more money in the North East and other communities. Because like we say, we want to roll it out in one neighbourhood at a time. And New Local are a national think tank, they're pretty much the only organisation that work along community power and public sector reform. And they've got loads of ideas and suggestions and they'll be doing some delivery for us and some advice. But fundamentally, they'll be developing the evaluation framework. And on page 11, section nine, I have put some draft outcomes and metrics there, but they're just illustrative. Because we are going to get together a team of people, more experts in this, led by New Local. To develop actually a set of metrics and objectives that we do measure over the next five years. Finally, I'll just finish by saying that we've got a really great creative delivery group that's leading this work. So it's chaired by Lee, Megan's a member, we've got other members of voluntary community sector. We've got the police, we've got the DWP, council, lots of people from across the council, not just public health and the NHS, who are key partners, helping to lead this work. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you Lucy. Do you want to come in, Lee?
Yes, I may certainly just question, but just the endorsement and to share my conflict of interest in that I chair a delivery group as well. I think we were talking in the previous item about courageous leadership. And I think this is an example of courageous leadership because it is sort of flying in the face of it. It is NHS money that's been used in here and it's flying in the face of what the NHS normally does. And it's understanding that the traditional way of working, which is very much sort of top down, doing to, siloed, condition based. Actually, isn't getting us anywhere where we need to be really. And so it's choosing to do something very differently. And there is an evidence base behind it because we've looked at what's been done elsewhere and that's, you know, been shown to make a difference. But actually, we don't know what that's going to be like in this place. So in a sense, we're trying to find our own evidence too. And that takes a bit of courage in the system that we're used to working in. So I think it's really important to notice that. Things that, for example, it's looking at different things. So if we think, take loneliness, we know that that is as great a risk factor for cardiovascular disease as smoking. But again, the NHS traditionally is an interesting loneliness because it's very difficult to measure. It's really easy to measure whether somebody's smoking or not or how many cigarettes today they're doing. And again, going back to our previous discussion, it's about what drives the way that we make decisions. And often the thing, traditionally what we've done is we've looked at data. But data only tells you about the stuff that's easy to measure and then the things that are easy to measure become the things that have become valuable. Whereas the stuff that's really hard to measure loses its value. And yet if you talk to people on the ground, that is the stuff that really matters. And so it's a way of trying to change that and do things differently. I think it's really important. And it is a transformative programme as well, so it's transforming the way that we use NHS money. But also there's an ask of the community groups and the people there to transform the way that they work as well. Because again, traditionally the model that we've got has put people in competition. Sort of fighting over tiny scraps of money which are non recurrent and it's not been beneficial. And actually being able to say, right, this is all of us in this space. How can we all work together in a complementary collaborative way for the benefit of the people that live in this area? Which are many of the people who are on the board as well, is just feels a lot healthier and a lot more constructive. And it is about that shift of power. And I think traditionally the way that particularly NHS has worked is really disempowering for people. And it just loses out on a lot of the vitality and the assets which are just in the community that, you know, could give us loads better outcomes if we just gave them chance. So that's part of the work behind this. I could talk a lot more about it. It is, and I feel very grateful at this stage in my career to be able to be part of this because it does feel very innovative. But I must stress, it's, you know, and Emma's probably taken the brunt of this far more than I know. It's not easy to justify this because it's not traditionally looking at the usual metrics which the NHS in particular is used to.
Thanks Lee, thanks everyone. I mean, it's fantastic. I think it was a battle to get the money. I was trying to look at the figure, was it 800k? Is that the investment?
For investment into the voluntary community sector in the North East plus a bit of classic building, yeah.
Which is 0.08% of the NHS budget. So it's a lot of stuff for a small amount of money. I just think if you had more money, how much you could achieve for it. Greg?
Troublesome twosome in the corner, I agree with Lee. A courageous leadership, well done to Emma for taking it on and I think you deserve massive credit for that. And I think for what it's worth, I'd encourage the board to give it a ringing endorsement. And ditto for Lucy for developing, doing the proper hard work and all that kind of stuff with lots of other people. I'm relaxed about not being able to measure outcomes in the way that lots of organisations traditionally measure outcomes. We're just not going to be able to do it at the end, let's just deal with that and live with it. I'm really, really relaxed about that. The intention is the right intention, the direction is definitely the right intention. I think there's a bit of work to do between the ICB and the council on the alignment, we know that, we can do that. There's a piece of work we just discussed around getting the money out of the door quickly. And we'll make sure that happens. And we'd just, there'll be some messiness along the way. Fine, deal with it. So but for what it's worth, I would encourage the board to give it all ringing endorsement.
Fantastic. Douglas?
Thanks, yeah. I just think actually it's fantastically good to see this happening. There's a certain element that says, you know, this has just come round again. It's all my background's in Burngrieve. So lived through all the Burngrieve new deal years and everything that came with that, which is really interesting. I mean, so I suppose just on the back of that, I just want to say, you know, just fund the people who are there. There's a certain number of key community activists in key community organisations who are just doing really good stuff, really effectively. In a way that it's very difficult to measure the outcomes like Greg said, but they kind of wouldn't be there if they weren't doing good stuff. And so I'm just saying really, don't reinvent the wheel, don't try and make up new stuff that doesn't even dawn. The people there will have identified what are the priorities in the area. Megan, you'll be on top of this obviously. And I suppose, you know, in some way what sounds like quite a pompously worded report for good reasons. You know, because you can do a lot with, you know, what's relative, well, actually very small amounts of money for the NHS. Really significant and useful amounts for a lot of small voluntary sector organisations. And yeah, just try and hold things together. I think the really important thing I learned from being the voluntary sector in Burngrieve and places is that, you know, we have a group. It's normally doing one thing, whether it's something like, you know, an informal cooking class, you know, or a community newspaper. I was involved with Burngrieve Messenger for many years. But actually the add on to that, there's so much unstated stuff that happens and where people benefit from because of the existence of that group. In all sorts of ways and that's where it makes actual health impacts to quite large numbers of people.
I agree, thank you. And would you be willing to be interviewed part of the sense making to understand your perspective around new deal?
Yeah, certainly. If helps, I'll dig out my memory banks.
Fantastic. Mike?
Thanks. I love this for all sorts of reasons, but there's two that I particularly wanted to just say something about. The first is that in my area of mental health, care in the community has been a sort of mantra. I was going to say going back to the early 80s, but actually it's to the late 1960s. And it's all been about focusing on developing the care and not developing the community. You can't care in a community unless it's a community. I just think it's an amazing opportunity to rebalance that. And I think probably actually that's why care in the community, in that cliche as it's almost referred to. Now probably hasn't done for people what it might have done for people because of that, that kind of disbalance in the emphasis. The other reason I really love this is there's an element about it that's like kind of a writing of a historical injustice in Sheffield. With the fiery furnaces of the North East and the people that lived, that worked there and had to breathe the fumes. And then the owners in the south and the west who didn't much fancy breathing the consequences of their industry. So I don't like the phrase levelling up for all sorts of reasons. But there's a kind of a rebalancing of opportunity in Sheffield here, which speaks, I think, to that historical discrimination.
Fantastic, thank you. Anyone else? Lee, last comment then let's move on.
Yeah, I suppose with my health hat on, which I found really difficult to take off. You know, the anticipation is that actually the health benefits might be a long way down the line. And that's what the traditional mantra is, isn't it? But actually, if you look at similar things which have been done elsewhere, and I'm thinking particularly of Healthier Fleetwood. We talked to one of the GPs there who was spearheading that work. He said basically their A and E attendance dropped by 20% within the first year. And also it had patients who'd lost a third of their body weight through joining a choir. And it isn't particularly that singing, you know, burns off a lot of calories, but it's about that, all the things we're talking about, that sort of connection. Feeling that you belong in, gaining confidence enables you to realise you can start to make choices and you can take control over your life. And actually, a lot of health benefits, as we know, do quite rapidly fall out of this. But we're really keen not to be focusing on that at all. This is very much about what matters to the people that are involved there, the community and community organisations. In terms of actually being, allowing them to drive what good looks like in this.
I'm going to take Emma, then Megan, I think we're going to wind up at that point.
So I just want to say, yeah, thanks Greg, because we had a lot of support from you and it's important that we have that, you know, that we can't put. I don't want to say it's a great packet, that would be between us because we are the kind of place shapers in this. And I think, but it can't just be about the ICB in the long term, you know. Talking to Sharon, your chair, the other day about some of the work you're doing as an organisation in this space. So again, it's about how do we connect that all together? But we have to be brave, we have to challenge tradition. We can't measure it, but as I think as Chris said or Jackie, there's lots of things we do in the NHS that we can't, we don't measure now. But we spend enormous amounts of money on them, but we know that potentially this could be, this could make a real difference to not levelling up. But improving the life chances of people. So I'd really like the endorsement of this board because it really matters to me to keep this as a long term thing. And I, you know, I'm not expecting to see results in five, 10 years probably. We've got to have that mentality. We can't deal in 12 month cycles like we do in the NHS. So anybody, you know, any support, any endorsement you can give me, please do because it's something I'm passionate about. But also let's think about, you know, what we can connect through all the statutory organisations as well and what. So it's not just an ICB thing, it actually is a Sheffield thing that we all put our shoulders to and we absolutely believe in. And we hold our nerve when I'm asked, you know, have you committed that money because we need it back? Yes, I've committed it. I'll be committing it on the 2nd of April next year. But that's the kind of, you know, we need that energy and, you know, leaders deal in hope, that's my favourite saying. And I'm really hopeful about this in terms of the impact it could make to people we serve. So just say thank you for all of your contributions and everyone who's involved in the work day to day.
Megan, last comment?
I just want to say, having been involved in the steering group, thank you to Lucy in particular for the approach that's been taken. Because I think sometimes it's felt like it's moved quite slowly and it's maybe been a bit frustrating for us. But it's because it's so completely new as a way of working because you haven't come to us and said, right, we want to commission you to do X, Y, Z. You said, like, what shall we do? And almost starting with that blank piece of paper. It's been at times painful, but it's really refreshing and I know that. And I know that certainly my other colleagues in the voluntary sector who've been involved have, have really appreciated the approach. So I just wanted to say thank you for that. And just to, to sort of say, you know, how much as a sector we kind of appreciate this new way of thinking and working with us. So that, yeah, that was all, just to acknowledge that really, thank you.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to thank Lucy as well, because I, I know it's a huge amount of effort that's gone into this. I mean, this is transformational stuff. So a big thank you Lucy. And I think we were asked to note the paper and the progress of the work. I think it's probably more than that. I think we're endorsing the work and we're saying that we're really behind it and really keen for it to continue. So thank you.
And one of the questions I did pose is actually, does the board want any oversight? I mean, do you just want to, I don't know, a six monthly update? Or, you know, just be guided by what you'd like to know and?
I, I think absolutely. I think we'd, we'd want to, we'd want to be aware of what's happening and, and follow it through. But I think, I think we're saying more than that, we're really behind this and, and we really would want this work to continue. I think that's the impression I'm getting from the comments that have been made. So I think it's probably bigger than that. So yeah, really keen to get updates. I mean, you know, we, we'll, we'll keep on board with it anyway. But maybe just having regular updates to board could be quite helpful.
So I'm recording that the board are endorsing the work?
Yeah, I, I think we're saying it's bigger than just hearing it. I think we're endorsing it. I think we're saying we're really supportive and behind it. Yeah? Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you everyone.
Next, it's the follow-up from the mental health and SYP workshops. Greg?
This is quick. So there's a paper in your path, I'll take it as read. The last two board meetings have been very deep, very in-depth conversations. In June was particularly focused on mental health. September was particularly focused on children, young people. I thought they were great conversations actually, Paul, it was worth. The paper sets out kind of, and they are my thoughts, you may well have different thoughts, so you need to do your homework and tell me what you think. Both in terms of the content, which I thought was amazing, and the style of the meeting, did it work for you? I just note attendance wasn't great for either of them. I'll leave that thought there. I would like your views on whether or not you, you felt that was a worthwhile thing to do. It was a lot of organisation for a relatively small number of people who did the organisation. I, well, we will definitely use the content to inform the future health and wellbeing strategy as we rewrite it into next year, take that as read. I'll leave you with the, the last paragraph of the paper, which came from Anthony Gore. We're all agreed that Health and Wellbeing Board must reflect on the right thing to do. That's been articulated many times. A wide set of constraints may make that difficult. However, our job is to ensure that, that the city continues to do the right things with respect to health inequalities. And I thought Anthony's point was really, really powerfully made actually. So I'll leave it there. Might want a short conversation about it now, but, but for, for what it's worth, I'd be a, a bit circumspect about the level of organisation that's on a relatively small number of people to do a deep dive versus kind of 10 people organised content for a standard board meeting. But I thought it was a great conversation both ways around for both of them.
Okay. Just a little word about the attenders. I think it was disappointing. I think I'd just like to reiterate that all of our roles sitting here on the Health and Wellbeing Board are to push forward the Health and Wellbeing Strategy. We're, we're not here to, you know, we bring a view from organisations, which is really welcome. We're not here to represent our organisations or protect our organisations. And even although it might not seem particularly relevant to our organisation, if it is part of driving forward the strategy, then I think it is really important that people attend. So I think Angela had sent out a letter just asking people to, to try and prioritise or even send deputies if they're not able to attend. So I think we want to just try and make sure that that happens in the future. Because it takes a huge amount of effort to prepare some of these sessions. And if people aren't here, it's obviously less valuable. So thanks. Any comments? Judy?
Just a couple of things. I think there were some really useful presentations. I thought perhaps there was a bit of a disconnect between the lived experience stories and what then the services said. And I would have liked to have seen them responding to issues that those people brought up very powerfully and quite painfully sometimes. And I suppose the other thing was, seems to be one of the values of this, this board is the collective brains. And we really had very little time to discuss the issues. It was right at the end of a long presentation. And I think that balance could be made a little bit more even.
Okay, thank you. Lee?
Yes, and yes. Judy, I agree with both of those really. I mean, I personally really valued the, the deep dive. I thought it was, it was, it was more useful than just being given a high-level presentation, you don't quite understand what's going on. I suppose my ask of us is, is, is the so what question at the end of it, do you know? And when we go, right, as a board, we're going to hold people to account, or we, you know, how are we going to do that? Actually, what are the practical steps that each of us have to, you know, and, and actually being able to hold ourselves to account, to enable to hold our partners to account? Because otherwise, there's a, there's a really interesting presentation that, you know, tells us what's going on, also identifies the issues and the problems. And, and, and there's a so what question for me, I think. So to, to, to do justice to the amount of work that goes into presenting that to us as a board, are, you know, we've got a responsibility in return for that to go, right, so, so what are we as a board agreeing are the next steps? And where does the accountability need to be held?
I would absolutely agree. I mean, I, I think we've had a lot of conversations today that, you know, what are we going to do about it? I think we're, we're committing to do something. I think we need to think how we do that. And it's probably something to take away and have some conversations about, but it is an interesting.
I just come back on that. So maybe, maybe this happens, you know, outside the realms of my experience. But, but maybe at the meeting isn't the time to go, oh, right, now we're going to do this. But, but almost like at the end of each meeting, task and finish group to go, right, how are we going to take that forward? And, and maybe it happens, you know, for the, for the greater and the good of this.
Greg's got the answer.
No, I haven't got the answer and that is the problem. So yes, to the task and finish group, I'll have to organise it. Who, how, when? So yeah, yes, but when the, the accountability comes from board members and others committing to whatever it is we commit to. And otherwise, I and Dan will have to do it. And that is a bit problematic. So yeah, but with that caveat.
Emma?
So Greg, as, as you know, as part of the Health and Care Partnership, we've got Children and Young Peoples Committee, which Meredith and Anthony joined the chair. So I'm sure they, they're doing some great work. So let's use that as a forum, because obviously we're addressing physical and mental health. So I just think rather than set something else up, we probably just need to feed it into that.
Brilliant, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, let's move on. So we're now the forward plan. Greg again?
It's a bit quick, it's that usual wine, suggests what you want to talk about, otherwise it'll be what I want to talk about and you may or may not like that. So March agenda is pretty packed, June agenda's getting packed, but it's open season, it's up to all board members, just what we want to talk about. I'll shut up.
Okay, thank you. And then Lee?
Can I give you a suggestion now?
Yeah.
Because we talked in the past, haven't we, about having a review of housing? Because housing is, it just has this massive impact on so many different areas of health and wellbeing.
Yes, I've done so twice in the past, but can come, can go back there.
I can't remember it, yeah, I'm sorry, perhaps I.
Maybe before your time. I have done so twice, but yes, can come back to it and I agree 100%. So think on the sort of focus and housing, like health is big, vast, sprawling, difficult nebulas, but yes, in principle.
Brilliant, thank you. And then just finally, the, the minutes of the previous meeting. Everybody happy? Anything that you want to be changed? Can we sign them off? Brilliant, thank you. Greg?
Very quick bit of AOB. So many board members will know, we are beginning to get to the rewrite of the, the rewrite of the Health and Wellbeing Strategy. It runs out next year. And my intention is to have it done by the start of the municipal year. Dan will tell me that's impossible for a whole bunch of reasons, but we will get it done next year. Two dates for diaries. One, there's to be a public event conference to sort of get into the, both the process and the content of the thing on the 30th of January in the afternoon. I will send out the invite, tell all the friends or tell all the people you think need to be there. It's a reasonably large-scale event. You may already know about it, you personally may be coming, but tell others. Second is on the 6th of January, 6th? It's on the X of January, which is a session for Health and Wellbeing Board members particularly, reflect on the current strategy, how well we did or didn't do. What should the next one look like? And Dan will tell us the date, but we will get it out to people and in diaries if it isn't already there.
From the 16th to January, it should be in diaries already. But if that can be prioritised, that would be really helpful, because it will help shape that conference. I'm pretty sure it is, because I was looking at my January diary the other day and I found it in there. So brilliant. Well, thanks everyone. I think that was a really interesting session. I guess the big question is how, how we actually do some of this stuff. And I think the commitment's there, but it's, we both talked about it before. So I guess it's, how, how do we make this bite? And maybe take that away and see whether we, we want to have some commitments to, when we talk about the left shift, do we start articulating that in percentage terms? I mean, we, we talked about point zero eight percent and what we can achieve with that. Let's take it away, let's have a think about it. And, and just thanks to everyone for coming. Thank you.